Welcome to our second Peralta Community College Board of Governors Board of Trustees meeting. The second meeting for 2021, and I will call to order this meeting at 7:02 PM. And Maysha, once you get the pledge of allegiance on the screen, President Garcia, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure, I'd be honored.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And before we begin, I'm just going to take a moment to uphold my commitment to you, as I had warned you all that we were going to do this, and also to take the advice of Dr. Benjamin who facilitated our retreat. And that is to begin each meeting with our kind of communication or statement of cooperation and our communication protocols, just so that we remember, and we are mindful of this every time we have a meeting. So from one through eight, number one, the board is continuing to work on trust in and among our members. Number two, we agree to listen as a board and seek to understand others and opposing viewpoints with the expectation of good intentions and a deep commitment to the district's students. We commit to being prepared for each meeting and to work within our established communication protocols when we seek additional information, and members will review the agenda in advance of each meeting and adhere to Board Policy 2340 for adding items to the agenda. We have all reviewed the board's code of ethics and commit to reviewing it annually at our organizational meeting to remind ourselves of the behavior we are to exhibit and the guidelines we are to follow in our role. Number five, if the code of ethics is violated, we commit to follow the process stated in the code and will first address concerns informally to settle disagreements one-on-one between and among members before moving to the formal process. Number six, we agree that from time to time, the chair will remind members of appropriate behavior and may call for a recess or redirect members if they stray from the topic of discussion. Number seven, we collectively recognize that it is within the duties and authority of the chair to render decisions or take actions to keep our meetings on track in adherence to the board policy. And number eight and nine, we will strive to fulfill the vision we established for ourselves. And lastly, we will model the behavior we want others to exhibit. Thank you for allowing me to do that, to start the meeting in that way. Can we do roll call, Maysha?
Yes, Student Trustee Yuri. Don't see her yet. I do have an email from her. As soon as I finish roll call, I'll let her in.
In the comments, she says she's here.
She says she's here.
Oh, she is. Oh, okay. Oh, she's here as a... Okay, so trustee Whitrow. Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee Handy.
Here.
Trustee Polk.
Here.
Trustee Bonilla.
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez-Juan.
Right here.
And...
Here, and whoever's not muted, can we find a way to mute ourselves? Okay.
And Madam President, you have a call.
Thank you. Let's move on to 2.4, Vice President Gonzalez-Juan, Report of Action Taken in Closed Session.
Yes, thank you very much. Just pulling that document up again. So in closed session, we did a number of appointments. Each of these appointments was passed on a, I think it's a seven-zero vote on my motion and a second by trustee Jelena Bonilla. So I'm going to read each of these, but I'm not going to read the vote out on each one. We've got somebody in the background who's not muted, if we could just be attentive to that. We pointed Ava Lee Pang as the interim Director of Business and Administrative Services at Berkeley City College, at a salary of $126,816 annually, effective January 2021 through April 30, 2021, or until the permanent position is filled. This position reports to Dr. Angelica Garcia, college president. We ratified the appointment of Marla Powell-Williams as the interim Executive Director of Fiscal Services in the District Office at a salary of $172,931, effective January 2021 through June 30, 2021, or until Adil Ahmed returns to this permanent position. And this is a position that reports to Adil Ahmed, interim Vice Chancellor of Finance and Administration. Recommendation, we approved a recommendation to amend the expiration date of Laney College President Rudy Besikov's contract to June 30, 2022. It had been December 31, 2021. President Besikov's appointment was approved by the board at its November 10, 2020 meeting, and that position reports to interim Chancellor Walter. We approved a recommendation to amend the expiration date of College Alameda President Nathaniel Jones III's contract to June 30, 2022, from December 31, 2021. President Jones's appointment was approved by the board at its November 10, 2020 meeting, and this position also reports to interim Chancellor Walter. We approved a recommendation to ratify the appointment of Denise Cynthia Richardson as the permanent Vice President of Instruction at Merritt College, effective January 6, 2021, through January 5, 2024, at a salary of $155,638 annually. This position reports to Dr. Dave Johnson, College President. We approved a recommendation to ratify the appointment of Michelle Len as the interim Payroll Manager, District Office, effective January 6, 2021, through June 30, 2021, at a salary of $92,230 annually. And that position reports to Ms. Rebecca De Dora, Director of Payroll Services. We approved the recommendation to ratify the appointment of Tammy Taylor as the interim Budget Director in the District Office, effective January 6, 2021, through June 3, 2021, at a salary of $132,580 annually. This position reports to Mr. Adil Ahmed, the acting Vice Chancellor of Finance and Administration. Each of these motions, as I indicated, was made by me, seconded by trustee Jelena Bonilla, with unanimous vote with trustees Whitrow Jenkins, Handy, Delphine Polk, Bonilla, myself, and Napliela Bella Reese, with no abstentions and no opposition. Madam President, that concludes the closed session readout for tonight. I hope that wasn't too tedious.
No, thank you for that. I am sorry.
There we go.
There is someone that is still not muted, and it's quite loud. I believe that individual is... Oh, it's no longer... Okay, I think we're good.
I'm sorry, I did have some banging around in my background. I'm at home, and dinner is being served, and I apologize for all that banging around.
All right, thank you for that, Vice President Gonzalez-Juan. Let us move on to 2.5, which is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Remove.
First, Whitrow. Second?
Second.
And trustee Diana Polk? Oh, Bonilla, trustee Bonilla. Excellent, thank you. Discussion? And let's do roll call.
Okay, Student Trustee Yuri.
Yes.
Okay, trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Juan.
Yes.
Okay, and trustee Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. 2.6, approval of the minutes. We need a first motion, rather.
I'll second.
Okay, the first motion was by trustee Bonilla. And the second motion, trustee Whitrow. Discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, Student Trustee Yuri. Okay, trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Juan.
Yes.
And trustee Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. And now let's move on to 2.7, our student, Associated Student Government Reports. Do we have anyone in the room? And who are they?
Let me check. We've had two, yes, and I will move over. Is Natalie Rodriguez from COA. Okay, she's in, and we'll have, we're supposed to have Liam Zhu from BCC. I'm looking for him now.
Okay. Hi Natalie, are you there?
Yes, good evening all.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Natalie Rodriguez. I'm the interim Director of Student Activities and Campus Life at College of Alameda, and I'll be reporting on behalf of our associated students. COA is very excited to announce that we now officially have a senate. Looking forward to collaborating closely with our senators and engaging them to the best of our abilities. They recently participated in the district-wide Associated Students Training, and will be collaborating in the upcoming Welcome Week and Black History Month activities. Thank you.
Thank you Natalie. Liam, are you in the room?
I don't see Liam unless he's one of these phone numbers that I am not sure of. Let me see if anybody is. Yeah, I don't see Liam as a registered registrant unless it's one of these phone numbers. And I can send, I'll try to send a message to them, maybe we can call them back in a bit.
All right, sounds good. Maybe we'll move on to 2.8, and then if we need to, we'll circle back to 2.7 to get to Liam. So 2.8, Classified, Peralta Classified Report, Senate Report. Terrence Fisher, are you in the room?
He is. I will promote him now.
Hello, can everyone hear me? Hello, could everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good evening. Good evening, President Reese, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Walters, presidents and guests. Most classified senators have not had a chance to meet yet, so tonight we have just one classified senate campus report. The report comes from the Berkeley City College Classified Senate. BCC has a new classified senate for the spring 2021 semester due to the departure of some staff. Jennifer Lanahan will be the BCC Classified Senate President, Andrea Williams, the BCC Classified Senate Vice President, and Dolores Harshaw, the BCC Classified Senate Secretary/Treasurer. There will be classified senate elections for the fall 2021 and through spring 2023 term. The first meeting for the semester will be Tuesday, February 9. Some items the senate will be addressing are classified representation on BCC and District Governance Committee, AKA how to get better involvement, and looking at ways the senate can give back to our community during these difficult times. That's the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you, Terrence, for that. Let's move on to 2.9, District Academic Senate Report.
Can you hear us, Donald?
Hello.
There you go.
Hello.
Hi, Donald.
Good evening, President Reese, members of the board, Chancellor Walters, the presidents, and all of the folks who are there. Here on behalf of the District Academic Senate, and I'd like to welcome back members of the faculty. We have our Flex Days activities this week, and we're looking forward and excited to see the various activities at the district as well as the colleges. And so it should be really interesting, and it seems like folks are really in sync about trying to address issues of diversity and issues of equity and being equity-minded. It's amazing to me how everybody is focusing on those issues in light of what's happened at the Washington DC and the concern that have arisen. And then certainly this week, we're having the inauguration. I'd like to take a moment to indicate that the District Academic Senate will be due resolutions for both Anita Black and Dr. Love, who passed away recently. We want to acknowledge their participation and active support of the Academic Senate over all of their years of being here. And we hope that the district will also really support whatever efforts are going on at Merritt for those activities. Finally, I'd like to stress that we are still concerned about the inability of the laboratory and studio classes to move forward. We are anxiously awaiting that. As many of you know, we have had classes in the fall that were successfully done, that followed all of the protocols and processes. And while we had two incidences, those were taken care of. The tracing happened, the people were quarantined, and nothing ultimately came of it other than the initial person that had COVID. So we know we could do these things, and we know that we could be effective. I know that the district has purchased a contract with a COVID testing, self-testing, and that they are looking at other ways of addressing these issues. So my hope is that the board will allow us, or at least at the very least, communicate with all of the faculty to see when we could have these face-to-face laboratory classes. We're not talking about everybody. We are only talking about a number of classes at each of the colleges. My hope is that the presidents of the colleges have been working with their faculty to ensure that that process can be safe. We are all very conscious of the fact that we are in a surge, but we also recognize that CDC, as well as Alameda Health, have both indicated that these classes are possible and can be supported under this purple standard that we have. So again, I would urge the board to support it. I urge the board to support both the athletic conditioning as well as those classes that really need to have some face-to-face time. I shudder to think that we are sending our students to Cal or to other colleges without the necessary laboratory training. And so you can't have laboratory training online. It just doesn't work. So my hope is that the board will support this endeavor. Anyhow, that's it. Thank you very much. Sorry, I'm on the phone today. My internet wasn't working all that well. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Let's move on to 2.10, Vice President Gonzalez-Juan. Do you want to take that over?
Thank you. For public comment, we're going to start, we've got a lot of speakers tonight, and speaking time, I think we've got 25-plus speakers. Speaking time will be limited to a minute and a half to accommodate all those speakers. The first speaker will be Jennifer Shnawski. President Shnawski, you can proceed. Jennifer, we're waiting on you. President Shnawski?
Here.
I think you're...
You can't hear her.
No, no sound. Okay, we're gonna see if you can fix your mic, which apparently seems to seems to not be working. No, all right, technical difficulties. So while President Shnawski is... Say something.
I can't hear you.
We can hear you now.
Okay, President.
I can't hear you.
Can I not be heard?
I can hear you, trustee Gonzalez-Juan.
I can't hear you.
I'll send a text that you can read and speak. I'll put in a chat.
President Shnawski, you, okay. Okay, well, while we are sorting that out, I'm going to read a few other names here, and we'll try to take these people in order. And let me just say, I know that, you know, while we're in lockdown and people are trying to juggle a thousand things, I know I'm trying to do that.
Hey, David, I can see that, like, people are... I can't hear anyone. I don't know if you can hear me.
Oh, yeah, we can hear you.
Someone should send her... I know, but can you just unmute yourself and say something's wrong? I can't hear anybody. Like, I got kicked out of the meeting, and then I came back, and now, like, I can see me, I can see y'all talking, but I can't talk, so give me a minute. Can you mute her?
That's really funny.
I'm trying to mute her.
Somebody just said they can...
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna assume y'all can hear me, and I'm just gonna start talking, okay? Thumbs up! All right, I can hear none of you.
Yes.
All right, so, oh, technology. I want to start out quickly by echoing Senate President Donald Moore's words of encouragement to allow our essential athletics, conditioning, and lab classes to go forward in person. We've shown in the fall that we were able to do this safely. Our students really need these courses. They need the face-to-face interactions and support. And our faculty have done an amazing job of putting together protocols to make sure that that can happen. I also want to compliment our interim VC of Finance, Adil. I also want to compliment our interim VC of Finance, Adil Ahmed. And on the revised budget, I don't know that I've ever, as PFT president, seen a revised budget come to us in the way that it is right now. And I really appreciate it. I saw the presentation before at another.
Looks like we dropped, it dropped. It looks like it dropped. Do you want to go on to the next one? It looks like she dropped off.
And we will circle back around to President Shnawski. Okay, Kenneth Barnardo, DeMarcus Ross, and David Lenaris. Why don't we line them up? And I was in the middle of saying that if there's a particular reason that you need to go earlier, we're trying to accommodate people. I understand that, you know, people are juggling a lot of things. And just please bear with all of us and try to be patient. And we're trying to make this work for everybody in as humane a way as we can. So Kenneth Barnardo, DeMarcus Ross, David Lenaris.
The only one of all of those that I see here is.
Thank you, Maisha. DeMarcus Ross, okay, David Lenaris, and then Adam Kaduri and Will Cohen.
So we have DeMarcus Ross in.
Okay, DeMarcus Ross, you are up. You have ninety seconds. Followed by Adam Kaduri. And if we have Will Cohen and Koto Sato, that would be great. Okay, DeMarcus Ross, you are up.
Hello, I'm DeMarcus. I've been struggling without football practice, but the conditioning and the slight practices that we have been to has helped a lot. And our own training, I've talked to some teammates. And the stuff we do on our own, it helps a lot, but I feel like the collaboration and having the organized program from Coach Bean and our athletics, I feel like it will put less stress on the players. And that's about it.
Thank you very much for your feedback, DeMarcus Ross.
Thank you for having me.
Please come back and share your insights any time. Adam Kaduri, Will Cohen, Koto Sato, Isai Santos. And if Kenneth Barnardo, David Lenaris, or Will Cohen show up, please let me know. Thank you so much for juggling here. Yes, go right ahead, Adam Kaduri.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for letting me speak on behalf of my players. My name is Adam Kadura. I'm the outside linebackers coach at Laney College. And I'm just here to represent the best interest of my guys and really all of our athletics. And I've witnessed firsthand their enormous struggle during this time, seeing all the progress they've lost. I've seen guys completely fall off the grid, who their dreams of getting a degree just fail because there's nothing to keep them aligned, right? Football and sport is really what keeps them aligned, keeps them in a routine, keeps them on track to get a scholarship where they otherwise may not. So I have a player who's come from some American Samoa, just to have, in Christian Toileu, in order to have an opportunity to get a degree and whatnot. So seeing, and I've been the point for all of them, right? They called me, you know, crying, struggling, and just, I just want to thank you all. I think I heard it correctly, that we're going to get back to conditioning here soon. Anything really helps these guys, and I'm going to be here till the very end. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Coach. I appreciate your feedback. So I pasted in to the chat the order of about the first ten people, so you can see that order. If President Shnawski returns, we can try to finish up her time. Kenneth Barnardo, David Lenaris, Will Cohen, Koto Sato, Isai Santos, Podenco Delgado, Charles Rachel.
I see Charles Rachel. He's the only one of those that you mentioned that I have thus far in attendees list.
Okay, well, then I'm going to paste in the next group right after that.
Okay, and Charles is, we're ready for you.
Charles Rachel, you are up.
Hello?
Yes, you're up.
All right, yeah, my. Yeah, I play baseball. My coach wanted people to talk about how, like, being in person truly does affect, like, our playing. It just, it does, as the person before said, it does help us, keep us in a rhythm, especially through quarantine. I like working out and like the physical aspect of it helps keep me locked in mentally with my schoolwork. And so especially with baseball, having that outlet to work with the teammates and really build that bond, it's really crucial for building my future. So I do think that being in person would really, really help and affect us in baseball, but also in our academic life. That's all about.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rachel.
All right, thank you for this time.
Thank you. Ms. Jameson, also then just pasted in.
Yes, I'm watching for that. So you now have Thomas in, and I'm looking for the others.
Okay, Thomas Greathouse, you are up. And for other participants, I appreciate your patience as we sort through the technological challenges of trying to do public comment in this awkward forum. But we're doing as well as we can figure out.
Good evening, everyone.
Thomas Greathouse.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Good, okay. So I'm a student.
Yes.
I recently got word that there's a delay in the in-person component of the swimming class, which I'm interested in attending. So I'm bringing that to your attention from my perspective as a student athlete. I just, I don't think it's fair to delay indefinitely in-person swimming. We're not the ones putting ourselves at risk of spreading COVID, because that's what this is mostly about. I believe the guidelines that have been set forth by various health agencies are sufficient to mitigate the spread of COVID. So I'd like to bring to your attention the nature of the pool environment itself actually is very unfriendly to any sort of microbe or bacteria or virus. It's very safe. In addition, it's outside. And so any plume of infectious vapor, you know, issuing from someone potentially would just be wafted away. And so lastly, it's mostly sunny days that we're out there, and so ultraviolet light also sterilizes microbes too. So I'd like to add that for these reasons, it makes a lot of sense to carry on in-person instruction in the athletics. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Greathouse. Appreciate your feedback. Ms. Jameson.
Okay, we have.
And pasted in the rest of the list of public speakers.
Got it. Thank you. We have Francisco.
Francisco Zapata.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
You are up.
Hello.
Yes, thank you. Continue.
Good evening, everybody. Francisco Zapata, I'm the head baseball coach. I just want to echo a lot of the people that have been speaking earlier in terms of what we're able to do. I'm the head baseball coach and a kinesiology instructor. According, sometime back, I was here at the board meeting and spoke to the pros of meeting face-to-face, what we had our time this past fall. I felt the guy, the student athletes were engaged, okay, mental health. It was a positive experience for us. I also spoke to the to the issue that our action team has gone above and beyond to install protocols that work, things that we've been working since middle of the summer, May. And we've gone as far as securing a testing site at Laney, where now we have that resource for us, which will help have mitigate even more so the spread of COVID. As I understand it, conditioning and other physical activities outdoors are allowed, okay? I believe some colleges are starting, even in the Alameda, the county Alameda, are also going to proceed with or are already a meeting. And I was wondering what is it that we have to do? How come Laney's not? You know, we've gone above and beyond to put in place these protocols so that we can return back safely. So just seeking some answers, and hopefully we can we can recontinue within, you know, within safety and and continue to help our student athletes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Coach Zapata. We're going to circle back up to Isai Santos.
Can you hear me?
All right.
Hello? Yeah.
Yes, we hear you.
Isai Santos, you are up.
Yeah, hi. I'm a player for Coach Zapata. And I would just like to say that I know that we had a success in putting in the protocols for the fall. And I know that as a team, we're eager to get out there to prepare for our spring season. And I feel that if we have the resources, like Coach said, with testing at Laney, and we can fulfill all these other protocols that are keeping us safe, then I think we should have the opportunity to go ahead and get out there for the spring. That's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santos. We're going to go to Jordan Lou Gibbons, who I believe is present now.
How are you doing, everyone? My name's Jordan Lou Gibbons. I also play baseball at Laney. I just wanted to kind of reiterate what they've all been saying, like, we've been given the opportunity to have the protocols and done, follow the protocols in order to keep everyone safe. And, you know, we're all outdoors, we're all wearing masks and keeping apart from each other. And I don't, personally, like, this is my fourth year playing baseball at Laney. I was supposed to leave last year, and because of COVID, I had to come back because I didn't have any offers. And it's been hard to try and get back into a rhythm and get back onto the field and be able to be successful and kind of get back into school. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lou Gibbons. I think we are going to Brock. Brock Drazen.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for hearing us tonight. I just wanted to echo what you've already heard as the Athletic Director at Merit, as the head track and field coach. We are hopeful that we can have this spring interaction with our student athletes and that they can have the interaction with their coaches and their peers. I have had great communication with our president, David Johnson. We are going to have all our student athletes sign a waiver and do baseline testing. We're going to enforce all the protocols that we enforced in the fall, like daily check-ins, temperature checks, masking, social distancing, bubbles, hand sanitizing, no shirt equipment, sanitizing areas of use. And I know, for me, you know, perhaps it would be easier to stay at home for all of us tonight. I guarantee you that I felt the stress in the fall of every day that we conditioned. And but I just think taking that apparent easy route isn't all that it's cracked up to be. We were successful for twelve weeks in the fall with only one case of asymptomatic COVID that was immediately isolated. The statistics do indicate that we may have some positive cases even in the spring, but we strongly believe that we need to have this non-contact interaction with our students and then with their peers for so many reasons, mentally, physically, emotionally, that the risks of staying away are at least as great as face-to-face conditioning. As a track coach, opportunities for our sophomores, they didn't have any last spring. So this spring is their last opportunity to be seen.
Sorry.
Okay. Sorry, you got cut off there. I think you were out of time. Thank you very much, Coach. I appreciate the feedback. Ms. Jameson. Who else is in the list here that we've got? Up, I think Andreas.
Andreas is in the room. Yes, he's in the room and like he's ready to speak.
Okay.
Yes, yes, I'm here. So.
Okay, Andreas, you are up.
Just wanted to say good afternoon to the Board of Trustees. And just wanted to build off and emphasize what's been stated earlier today already by one of the, I believe, President of Education. There are processes set in place for students to already learn this fall in person, and many of them have proven to be successful. I'm a student at Merit College and I'm on the track and field team. And representing us as a non-contact outdoor sport, I pray that as a student athlete, we have the support from our Board of Trustees to allow us to hold on to this opportunity, to hold on to normalcy, and allow us to continue to be ready after we move on from this pandemic to attack any chances of opportunity with good preparation. Personally, I'm a renter. I'm a frontline healthcare professional. And last year, I wasn't able to prove my ability to acquire a scholarship, and I'm more than ready to move on. I also just wanted to actually give a shout out to our Athletic Director, Brock Drazen. He's been working since the summertime to help every student athlete in our district preserve our goals, dreams, and aspirations. And he's just created a great environment at Merit College for all of us to feel safe during these times. So thank you for your work.
Thank you very much. I see Jennifer Shnawski has resolved her technical issues. If we can go back to her, that would be great.
Thank you so much. I'm so sorry. I blame the wind. I don't know where I cut off. I think it was about the budget, so I was. I don't know where I cut off. I think it was about the budget, so I was just complimenting the fact that we're getting a revised budget in the middle of the spring, and I'm really grateful for that. I would like everyone to pay attention to the fact that we are in very good, a very good financial situation. And to note that there is a COLA for next year from the state of California that is proposed in the January budget. And we believe that COLA funds should be going towards faculty, staff, and our student workers. So we'll be advocating for that. I'd also like to point out that we are not actually underwater with our finances, and so we should really be focusing on increasing enrollment and putting funds towards increasing enrollment, towards strengthening our educational systems and supporting the faculty, staff, and students who are working hard every day. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Let's see, it looks like Flynn is in the room.
Yeah.
Okay, why don't you go right ahead if you could, please, sir?
Yeah, this is my second time.
Flynn Morrison.
Yeah, this is my second time speaking to you guys. I'm a little bit concerned that after the last time that we haven't seen a plan put in place to bring back the athletics for this season. Also, the the fact that the schools in our district, like Shiboro, that actually started up athletics as of today, as well as San Mateo County Community College also starting back up. And then there's also D1s, D2s, such as Holy Names playing out of College of Alameda that are back to practicing. So I understand we are in a pandemic and cases are rising, but at the same time, it's not really a valid excuse anymore because all these schools have figured out a way how to actually get back out there. So I'm kind of just pleading that, you know, everyone else around us is getting back out there and are able to put in a place, put in place a plan to get athletes back out there. For me personally, I'm from Australia, so I'm trying to seek that opportunity to get to the next level and further my academic and athletic career. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It looks like we have a number of other people here, and so I'm just going to call the next set of names here. From what I understand, we have Luke, Ren Piper, Raven Richardson, Ryan B. Why don't we go with those three?
Is that?
Yes.
Luke.
Hello. Yeah, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Luke Ren Piper. I'm the new managing editor for The Citizen for this upcoming spring 2021 semester. For those who don't know, we're the student publication that covers the four campuses and the district. Since COVID, we've been running our newsroom remotely and have remained dedicated to the work and to the community we serve. We have a talented and thoughtful staff here at The Citizen. We are always looking for more students who want to be a part of the newsroom. No matter your background, experience, or age, there's a place for your voice to be heard here and throughout the community. Our mission is to cover the aspects of Peralta that other outlets are less inclined to report on. This is our job. And it's what I find most exciting about doing journalism in this district. I look forward to working with student groups, faculty, classified professionals, and the administration to give the most balanced and most detailed account of our community's highest ambitions and our understandably human feelings. I'm a student and a member of our community. I hope to demonstrate that fully in the work we do here at The Citizen. Thank you and stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. We've got Raven Richardson, Ryan B., and then I think Dustin Chaney is in the room, and so let's try to do it in that order. Raven Richardson or Raven Richardson in the room. Okay, you're up, sir.
Hello. Good afternoon, you guys. I've been here once before. You've probably heard my name, but I'm gonna cut straight to the chase. Starting off with remote learning, you know, it was a big change, not only for me, but a lot of my classmates, and I did have a hard time adjusting to it, you know, thinking I had enough time to take care of my family, work, go to practice, and do academics all at the same time. It's like it's the biggest shift for me that I've ever had to experience, and I'm pretty sure for others it's been a difficult time keeping up with academics as well. So if we are to have in-person classes, like, you know, for required classes that are needed to transfer to any university, more specifically California, so we can stay local. You know, if we can have some type of remote learning in person, it would benefit people like me in my case because we need that actual classroom interaction. It's a different environment, and it's 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 more to the story, but I'm on a limited time. And then also, like, for athletics, it's like me personally, as well as like my peers, like, you know, we understand you guys have the say-so for whether or not we play or, you know, we can play or we can't play, but I kind of think it's unfair that you guys should at least go by our coaches because then it's causing us to sit there and look at our coaches, like, you know, you're telling us one thing, but then you're going by another, and then it looks like they're just lying to us or playing games with us, like, is there some way you could better communication with our coaches? So then that way, you know, they could stay up to date while also keeping up us up to date with what's going on as well. Like, that's the main thing, like, that's our main concern is communication. So if so, could y'all do a better job of that, please? And that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. Appreciate the feedback always.
Vice President Gonzalez, UN, I just sent you a message. Can I interrupt for for one second? Not to not to get
Please.
the line, but Dr. Walter would like to say something. If she can have the floor for a moment.
Okay, thank you very much, and I want to
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Board Officers, and thank you to all the speakers who have come forward this evening. I just wanted to update you, and I'll be talking a little bit more about this in my remarks a little bit later in the meeting, but we have moved forward with the athletic conditioning and the non-essential, hard-to-convert face-to-face labs and classes, as well as essential classes. So you could be looking for an update, an announcement, what have you, coming out pretty soon. I apologize that you haven't received this message before today, but it's been one of those situations where we wanted to be really, really careful about moving forward. So there will be much more information coming, and we hope that that information will be satisfactory so you can begin your your studies, begin your athletic conditioning, and what have you, under the guidelines and protocols that we have in place. And like I said, I'll be giving a larger, a little bit more detail when I speak on my comments a little bit later, but I just want to let everybody know in case you, you know, you all want to hear this now. So thank you for letting me have a moment.
Thank you very much, Chancellor. I'm sure that is welcome news for many people. And I want to remind people, you know, the Board doesn't respond because we're not allowed to respond basically on on non-agendized items for for public comment. So it may appear that we don't, you know, like, we're not paying attention and so forth, but it's really just questionable law. We're not able to engage in extended discussion, just for people who are not familiar with that process. Ryan B. and then Dustin Chaney. Corey Hollis, you'd sent a note saying you were yielding time, but I don't think anybody's taken that time, so I need to know, get clarification, whether you had a comment. Why don't we start with Ryan B.?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Brings Peralta Board of Trustees and fellow Peralta community. My name is Ryan, and I'm the new editor-in-chief of The Citizen. For those of you who don't know, The Citizen is the only student-run publication in the Peralta District. This upcoming spring will be my fourth consecutive semester on staff. Since joining the publication in the fall of 2019, I've covered a variety of topics reflective of our diverse community and what transpires within it. Journalism to me is truth, integrity, advocacy, and accountability. My vision is to further grow our coverage throughout Peralta and the communities of which it is a part of. These are trying times for everyone, and as journalists, we strive to give a voice to the voiceless. We present factual information that doesn't always appeal to others, but we believe that transparency is the only way to true progress. We always welcome criticism and believe communication to be a cornerstone of the work we produce. All the best. Thank you for your time, and all of you have a great night.
Thank you very much, and thanks to all the journalists at The Citizen. Let's see, Corey Hollis has yielded time or done, I believe. Dustin Chaney. And then John Beam. And I believe that's everybody who's here. If there's somebody else who's here who had signed up for public comment, please make yourself known to me or Ms. Jameson. Dustin Chaney, you are.
Yes, can you hear me?
We sure can. Go right ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you for having the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm an instructor and a coach for Laney College for baseball. I just wanted to restate, it was good news to hear that we're going to be able to come back and be able to participate in some matter coming up shortly, but I would like to state that, you know, updates, updates, you know, more 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 radically would be much appreciated. There's protocol that we have followed to the T and above and beyond, and the students have applied to all of this, and it feels frustrating that we can never move on when we when we hit a benchmark and we don't have any updates for the next the next so-called stage of we can do things. And that that tends to be very frustrating, and if people can get on the same page and have updates quicker for us and meet and be more effective in that manner, it'd be great, as well as students. I know we are here for the students and for their safety, and like I said before, our protocols are in place, and we are looking out for students' welfare and moving them on to colleges for scholarships, money opportunities to pay for school. And I think that's that's originally why we're here, and that's why we're here for the students itself. Some of these students do not have money to move on to the next level, and athletics is a big avenue for them. And if they don't have this and they can't train properly, they will not have a successful season, and they will not get the opportunity to play at the next level and the financial opportunity they will receive. So that's all I have for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Coach. John Beam, I believe you are up next, and then I understand from Ms. Jameson that Brenda Johnson and Lilia Chavez both put in speaker cards, but and so I'm now aware of that, so we're going to get to you. Coach Beam? Let's see, maybe we're going to come back to Coach Beam.
Can you hear me? I'm there. Hello?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. With the Chancellors, good news tonight. I appreciate it. I want to take you back to December when we had many students came and coaches talked about it in the boards, and everybody agreed that we needed to opt in and we're going to move forward, and we did. My class of 100 went from 22 students to 44, and now it's up to 59. The problem is that's a class of normally 100. So where's that other group of 40? That's a 40% drop. We have created increased stress, anxiety, and feelings of helplessness for these young people because of we don't make a decision. We were told we were coming back just January 4th, then January 11th, and now today to hear that we are coming back soon, but what does that actually mean? Especially when they look around in the suburbs of San Mateo and DVC opening up. Remember, the students that we have are mainly coming from backgrounds that have been told that they don't belong in college. And so we reaffirm that fear for them at times when we don't come up with decisions and we waffle back and forth. We need to have a consistent message that they belong, that we value them, and we're here to support them. And I'm glad that we are saying that now, but we understand that the trauma they're going through. And I appreciate that we're doing this, but we need more than it soon. What is the actual date? When can they get going? They have job schedules that they're trying to determine. So if you can give us more than just coming back soon, what does that mean? Is it tomorrow? Is it next week? Is it two weeks? What is soon to you? Because it's changed from December to now we're in January. I appreciate your time, and I want to thank everybody that's thinking about our students, but we can do more by being more consistent. That's what our students need. They've had nothing but inconsistency in their lives. We are their consistency. Thank you very much. I appreciate you all.
Thank you very much, Coach. Brenda Johnson and then Lilia Chavez.
I'm sorry, I did not unmute myself. I'm not sure why my name came up, but I'm just an observer, so I'm sorry for that.
Oh, that's all right. And Lilia Chavez, were you wanting to make a public comment? Is there anyone else who showed up for public comment but hasn't been called on yet? Okay.
Oh, it looks like
Seeing. All right, good. Thank you for your patience, everybody. I know that's a little bit of a challenging process, but we are now through public comment, and we can return to the rest of our agenda. I will hand the hand it back to President Napolea Bella Reese.
That's good. Thank you. Let's move on to 2.11, which is the Budget Study Session on the Student-Centered Funding Formula and the apportionment process used by the State Chancellor's Office. Chancellor Walter?
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. President Reese, members of the Board of Trustees and colleagues and community guests. We are here today. We're going to talk about our budget. We're going to begin the process of talking about budget and thinking about it from a longer-term perspective, and so we'll be having study sessions on a frequent basis to help everybody be on the same page, understanding where we are and what we can be thinking about for our future. And there are a number of different definitions and terms and ways of calculating a community college district's budget, and so we wanted to provide a refresher on or introduce terms for those of you that are not familiar with some of the aspects of state budget for our district. And to that end, tonight, we will be talking about two items in general. One is the Student-Centered Funding Formula and how it works. And within that, we'll be talking about the apportionment process, which you might have heard as P1 or P2 or recalc, these different phrases that many of us kick back and forth, kind of like speaking a different language, oftentimes not thinking that other people may not be familiar with the language. So to help us with this, as you might know from other opportunities that we've shared within our district regarding the budget, we have asked CM Brambott to come and share with us. CM's firm is working with us on our data integrity project and also working with us to revise or consider revisions to our budget allocation model. But to give you a refresher, CM with Cambridge West is a very well-renowned organization that works with community colleges in California. And I'm going to go ahead and say, even though this is not on CM Brambott's resume or bio, that he has been instrumental in actually creating the Student-Centered Funding Formula, but maybe we won't hold that against him. So anyway, he's also got 35 years of service in community colleges. He served as a vice president of administrative services and has held these positions for many years in our system. He's received a lifetime credential as a community college supervisor, and he's received the Walter Starr Robbie Award from the Association of Chief Business Officers. So I wanted to So I wanted to introduce him and have him walk us through a bit of a presentation, but first, because we don't want this to be a kind of a a presentation, we want it to be more of a dialogue to see if there are any questions you might have to begin with. And then we will go ahead and, and start with a presentation and begin this process. So are there any questions?
No, welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Well, let me ask this question. Does everybody know what the Hold Harmless is? Board members, people know what the Hold Harmless is. Okay. Do you know what Peralta's Hold Harmless is? You can just say no, or yes, or maybe. And along with that, do you know? Okay, that's good. Do you know? There's, okay, the six has to have a comma, three zeros, another comma, and three more zeros. So, okay, seven. Do you also know that Peralta's Hold Harmless is not unique? In other words, there are other districts in California that have either a greater or lesser Hold Harmless. All right. Well, okay. With that little quiz, let me turn it over to CM to go ahead and get us going on the Student Center Funding Formula and how it's, how it's manifested.
Thank you, Chancellor Walter. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Walter, and the people who are participating this evening. I sincerely appreciate your time because I can hear the students, I can hear the faculty, I can hear the other community members who are seeing the challenges with the pandemic. So we, we are surrounded with the challenges. That does not mean that we will not get our way out of it. We certainly will get out of this, these challenges with the patients and I'm, I'm sure you all are working out to serve the students and your community in a worthwhile way. What I'm going to present you today is has two parts as, as Chancellor Walter has said is, one is what is the Student Center Funding Formula? And what is the associated components in terms of the our 320 report, which is our attendance report? And also how they interpret the 320 report when they provided you the dollars for the district office? So this is kind of your bread and butter, the largest portion of your income coming to the Peralta Community College District. For the last year, almost $120 million came to Peralta Community College District through this process. So it is extremely important. So I will ask for my presentation to put it up. So at least I can walk the slide. So these are the two part of the, the presentation that we will work on it today. And again, there will be enough time for the question for you after I go through the presentation. If you felt urgency of asking me something, you can either stop me or go to the Q and A box and put your question. And I'll be glad to answer that one. As a part of our effort, in order to bring the people who are constituents and who are working on the, on BAM Task Force, I have made the similar presentation to them in order for me to build the trust among the people who are working on the campuses and also working at the board level and chancellor and the president. So my role is trying to build the gap, build the bridge in a way where people start understanding the information and the people who are taking the information can help them and guide them to make some policy decision going forward. So the next slide we have is unless you, if you have heard it, then please pardon me because there may be some reputation that you may hear it here and there, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody is fully aware of it in terms of what the Student Center Funding Formula is. Student Center Funding Formula moved away from the SB 361. SB 361 formula was in place called Equalization Formula for quite a few years. The Student Center Funding Formula was basically developed in order to support the district's community and the students, especially for the students who are pretty much low-income students. So basically by providing the dollars to the district for the low-income students who are coming to the community colleges will help them to achieve their goals and they could be the best citizens and possible in a workforce environment. At the same time, the, the state was looking for how we can find a way to see the student success can also be accountable and provide the funding on an ongoing basis. So the Student Center Funding Formula have three components, which is part one is called a basic enrollment. It's almost similar to what we have seen under SB 361. So everything to do with what you are producing in your classroom, in your athletics, in your labs, so everything to do with the FTES, it is basically 70% of the dollars will be provided based on the enrollment. And the enrollment have a five different component. You have the credit, non-credit, incarcerated students, special admit student, CDCP. Those are the five components that you have and that all come together as a 70% of the dollar. The part two is a supplemental. The supplemental is for 20% of the funding from the state come for the low-income students coming to your district who are participating either in AB 540 or Pell Grant or Promise Grant. So those are the three components as a supplemental. The 20% is a goal for the state and that's how they are developing that. Your district may be getting higher percentage or lower percentage depends on the participation of the students in your district. The third component is called student success. Basically, those are the success metrics developed by the state chancellor's office, whether it is associate degree or it is a transfer, baccalaureate degree, credit certificate, transfer level math and English, four-year university transfer, nine or more CTE unit or regional wages. So the 10% of the dollar coming from the states will be provided as a part of the student success. So the ultimate goal of the state is provide the funding, 70% for the FTS, 20% for the supplemental, and 10% for the student success. So the next slide is showing you what are the changes. If you all remember, 1819 was the first fiscal year that the Student Center Funding Formula was implemented. We are currently right now in the year three for the Student Center Funding Formula. This is an evolving process. So we want everybody to know that as the Student Center Funding Formula came about, the changes are taking place as they are knowing that's how it is working better or not working better. And if they are not working better, they are tweaking it as they go. So the, this, at first time, they wanted to reduce those percentage from 70% to 65%. Other percentage to be increased, but all of a sudden they, they realize that changing those percentage will not provide the stability for the district. So now the percentage 70, 20, and 10 is here to stay until further notice into the future years. The second thing they may have made the change, when we were looking at the student success matrix for 1819, they were using 1718 data in order to provide the dollar. All of a sudden, some district were using a success matrix as automatically giving them a certificates and things like that. So they've become a runaway train. And they saw that very clearly that some districts are trying to gain more revenue from the, from the state by just automatically granting certificate to the student. So in order to put the break, they decided from this year, from 1920 onward, they will be using three-year average. So for 2021, you are going to get paid for 1718, 1819, 1920 divided by three. And whatever your matrix is going to be, you're going to get paid for 2021. So it's kind of putting a break on it. The success matrix now only count for highest degree or certificate. All of a sudden in year one, the same student was getting the degree, getting the two certificate. So all of a sudden they're getting the three different dollar value as a part of the things. And they realized that we are having a lot of duplication of the dollar provided to the district. So now they are only counting the highest award which student have achieved. Wanted to make sure that you get paid, but you only get paid for the highest award and not all the awards are part of it. The fourth is Extended Hold Harmless. As a part of the 2021 budget deliberation, the best thing happened to the most of the district in state of California that they have added a two additional year for the Hold Harmless. When Student Center Funding Formula was adopted, there was a three-year of Hold Harmless. 1819, 1920, and 2021. This was the last year for us under the old way of doing the business. Because in a 2021, they added the two more years on top of it. So now it is 2324. So come July 1st, the Hold Harmless will go away. As of right now, we have no way of knowing whether the extension will be granted in a future budgets or not, but at least right now is it through 2324. The stability of funding for non-credit and CDCP FTS is no longer provided. The reason because those numbers are small and they are also providing the district prior year rather than the three-year average. So you automatically get paid for whatever you generate rather than having the three-year average. So they felt that you really don't need to provide the stability for those component part of it. So the next slide is showing you where we are, how we're getting paid. As I have mentioned earlier, the base allocation, there is no change, which is basically to open the door for your college. So your college could be 10,000 or less FTS or 10,000 and more FTS. And this is how the base allocation get provided. There is no change to the base allocation under SB 361. It remained the same. For the credit FTS, the first year was 3727. This year is 4009. The reason it is the same for both year because we did not have the COLA. I just want you to know that. And the other components, whether it is incarcerated students or special admit, they are fully funded, 100%. They are getting funded for it. So those are the dollars is being provided. One thing I want you to know that the credit FTS is going to be paid based on three-year average. So for the 2021, you are going to get paid based on 1819, 1920, and 2021. What you will submit, that's what you're going to get paid for. For Peralta Community College District, because your 1718 year is going to be dropped out, your three-year average credit numbers will be lesser because you have the highest year in a 1718. So you will see some impact in your calculation going forward. All other categories are what you produce within the fiscal year, you get paid for it within the ramification of the, what the growth formula is. So there is no, no change for that, but the credit FTS have a major change because it is a three-year average. The next slide.
CM, can I ask a question?
Sure.
There's some questions in the chat, but before I get to those, I would encourage the, if you, if you're, if you're comfortable trustees to voice your question. But my question is, are we getting the same for this next fiscal year because of COVID? I thought we were going to hold the same student count. Is that applicable here?
For the 1920, they have provided something called emergency condition allowance. So whatever they have it for the P1, higher of the P1 or the P2, they have provided to the district. For 2021, emergency allowance, we will find out when we have the P2 certification comes out. And that, that will hold. I have no reason to find out that they will do anything otherwise.
Great. Thank you. Would you like me?
But at the same time, I also want you to know that you do have the Hold Harmless. So you are going to get paid what you got paid for 201920 going forward for 2021. So there's a double protection you have built in.
Thank you. Would, would the trustees like to raise your questions? Or how would you? Okay, go ahead.
Yes.
All right. Okay, at the bottom of the slide, it says less incarcerated and special admit. Why less incarcerated and special admit? And what do you, what is considered special admit?
Well, the two part, the reason they are less incarcerated and special admitted because both those category get paid 100%. They are not getting paid 70%. So they have, if you look at the dollar value for incarcerated, they get paid 5,445 for 1819, 5,622 for 1920 and 2021. So those, that is the reason because the first year when they started doing the calculation for 1819, everything was together. So it was very difficult for the district to figure it out. So now they already kept all those data separate. And that is the reason I made that note. So people fully understand that your credit FTS will be only have a three-year average. Incarcerated and special admit will not be included. Special admit are the people who are taking the classes who are in high school.
Okay. Trustee Withrow has a question, and I also want to say there's a question about oh, that we are, I believe that Peralta does not have incarcerated programs at this time.
Correct.
Okay.
You are, you are absolutely correct. You don't have any incarcerated for 1819 or 1920.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Brief question. And I may have missed it in the coverage here, but where do we stand from the standpoint of our students and their success or lack of success, being the student success factor vis a vis the state criteria? Where do we, where do we stand on that?
I, I will come back to you in one of the slides if you allow me to talk about it at that time.
That's good. Thank you.
All right, CM, I don't see any other hands.
Okay. So, so this particular slide, it is also for the student access. This is for the low-income student, AB 540, whether Pell Grant and a Promise Grant. As you can see, that funding is based on unduplicated headcount. So this has nothing to do with your FTS or anything. It is a strictly unduplicated headcount. Your student can be in a Pell Grant and also could be in a Promise Grant. So you get paid twice for that particular student. You get paid 948 twice if they, if the same student in both categories. So I just want you to know, you have a student population fairly healthy in order for you to get maximum dollar value in terms of from the state under the Student Center Funding Formula.
I have a quick question with this, if I may. Really quickly, can you talk a little bit about how this data is tracked with regards to AB 540 students?
I'm sorry, that is being collected by the, by the colleges and they do submit MIS data. So I will not be able to give you more detail.
Not an ask. Thank you.
No problem. The next slide is for the student success. As you can see, there is a various categories for the student success matrix. As you can see across the board, we, I have provided you the dollar value. The highest one is 2,236 for associate degree for transfer. The lowest part is probably nine unit of CTE courses, which is $539 for all students. The same student, if that is receiving a Pell, Pell rates, then get 211. If that student is also enrolled in the promise, then he get 141 more. So one student can get 559, 211, and 141, as long as that student is. As long as that student is eligible under all these three different criteria. So you can see that as the colleges work very, very hard to retain the students. Help them to be a successful, make sure that they have all their application and everything been collected. The district have a better chance of getting more dollar for ongoing basis as they serve more students in a future years. The next slide is hold harmless. And, and this is a very important slide, and I want everybody to understand that the hold harmless is extended through the twenty three twenty four. For two thousand eighteen nineteen, Peralta Community College District Hold Harmless was a two million dollar. Manageable dollar for the Peralta Community College District. For two thousand nineteen twenty, your hold harmless dollar become seven million dollar hold harmless uh for two thousand nineteen twenty. For twenty twenty one, we will see when they will certify the P one report in the last week of February this next month. My feeling is your whole harmless will be greater than a seven million dollar. And the reason being, even though there is no cola, but some of your metrics are not as favorable as we like to see going forward. So what my goal today to bring this across to you is if you have a hold harmless, Peralta District is not the only one have a hold harmless. There are quite a few district in the state of California are using the hold harmless provision for them to have the additional funding. Some district have a higher than the Peralta, some district have lesser than Peralta. Some district already started working on the hold harmless to see when it goes away, how to manage their budget. Some district are, have not started doing anything about it. So there is all over the place and everybody is kind of managing hold harmless very, very differently. There is no clear guidance, there is no clear guidelines coming from the state chancellor's office. How to manage hold harmless and what it will happen to the district. So every district have to manage their own in going forward.
So I wanna, I, I wanna interject here to really un, help understand, everyone understand. The whole harmless is like a grant, I guess, if you wanna think of it that way. We have, you know, a certain amount of expenses, we have a certain amount of revenue. And there's a gap between those and there's a, this whole harmless that we're given. So it can be seen as something that we have to plan for if it's going to disappear. And that's what you hear when people talk about the skiff cliff. So what we need to do is we need to think today, we need to think that today is twenty twenty four. And it not kind of think, oh, we've got plenty of time. Because you might imagine, well, how are we going to close a gap of seven million dollars, which we're getting from the state in, in twenty twenty four? So I really want, excuse me, I'm sorry, I don't know, I'm having a, a thing. I really want everyone to really understand how the hold harmless has to be sort of dealt with as a piece of reality, even though we are in good budget shape today and, and kind of what that means. And now I see, I see hands. This is great. Okay, I saw trustee withrow, then President Reese, and then trustee Bonilla.
Well, I'd like to segue from what the chancellor just talked about. It's not clear to me um what the risk is over time, looking out on a a, a period of time. What is our risk of, that we're assuming with this home hold harmless? Are we gonna get it out in, in three or four years and all of a sudden the, the floors collapsed under us?
Well, I mean, if the hold harmless, if it does what we are being told it's going to do, which is go away. It means that in that period, now I see uh VP UN, you wanna keep track of your turn. It, it means that in that period of time, that funding is no longer gonna be there, so we need to plan for it. That's a very nice way of saying, yes, we need to figure out how we're gonna cover that seven million dollar hold harmless amount that the state is advancing to us uh as we go forward.
So that, that is the risk then. We're, at some point in time, we're gonna have to look at it and say, we no longer have that funding, seven million dollars. Um, so if we haven't modified the revenue coming in. We're gonna have to go through a major drawdown.
You've got that. That's perfect. That's a great way to phrase it. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
President Reese?
Thank you for that. So the, the hold, and this is such a great discussion because I think that there are um a, a variety of different ideas or understandings about our hold harmless. And yes, it's, it's a great thing because it's kept us afloat seamlessly once we transition to S E F. But it is also a crutch. It is also a bad thing because we are being taken care of, as you were saying, kind of alone, kind of a grant. Uh, this big gaping hole of six to seven million dollars that we don't see. And the reality of the matter for those that um often say, well, we're, we've got hold harmless for a couple of years, for a couple of years. Why do we need to start uh changing how we do things? That's exactly the, the kind of uh bad, insidious, nefarious portion of the hold harmless. Because if we don't plan, shape our budgets accordingly, then in twenty four twenty five, we are six million dollars in a, in a deficit or in a gaping hole. And so what this is, what's wonderful about this is that we know that we're gonna have to fill six, seven million dollars. But we have a couple of years to start shaping our expenditures, our expenses to kind of do this gradually, knowing that it is going to go away. And so, I mean, so I guess the question that I would, I would love um CM to, to be able to talk about in a second is what exactly would happen to us if we didn't start changing our ways now? And how could we also start, from what he's seen at other districts? How could we start shaping our budgets now in preparation? So there's two separate questions. What's the worst case scenario? And then also, how are other districts or how could we start shaping ourselves to prepare for that?
Again, I think it is a great question. I know it is a two-part question. Uh, and again, uh, twenty three twenty four, people think it is a three years away, but it will come so fast. People don't realize that what is already here. So that's first part. What we have guide the other district who are in a whole harmless right now. We also made it very clear to them that you still have to manage what you are offering to your students and your community. You cannot just go ahead and try to balance the budget just because you have hold harmless and chop it off anything immediately. So I just want you to hear that very clearly. I'm not recommending you to go ahead and look for seven million dollar worth of budget cuts at all. I'm not saying that. But what I just want to make sure that you all as board, uh, senior cabinet chancellor and the people who are hearing that we do have a situation, is, is a difficult situation. In one hand, we need to fight the pandemic. We also need to serve the students and the community. But at the same time, we wanted to make sure that our financial house is in order in a way that we can protect the jobs of all who are working in Peralta right now in a future years. And at the same time, we make sure that we are producing what we are talking about in terms of the productivity and the people who are gainfully having employment are supporting the district in the best possible way. And take this one in a way where you can say, can we find a way to have some part? Some discussion start now when we develop twenty one twenty two budget. Rather than going silent for two, three years and then all of a sudden you look for the solution, it will be a very, very difficult solution. And you may not have as many way to find the solution because it will be very dire need at that time. That being said, that seven million dollar is not guaranteed going to be remain seven million dollar. That could grow into eight or ten or twelve million dollar. The reason being, cause then I'm looking at your numbers for eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty and twenty twenty one. I can see very clearly that the hold harmless is going to grow higher, not lower in a future years. Because whenever we are able to get the cola from the state and not able to increase our FTS, not able to increase our student access, uh, the students who we serve. And we are not able to have all the students who have that success rate higher and higher. And I will show you your numbers in a few minutes. It is very difficult for us to say, how can we have our funding increase in a future years? You have, we have to find a way to produce our numbers. So the hold harmless is there for the district in order to manage in a way while they are going through the process, not ignoring it. Ignoring it is a definitively having a challenges. So some of the district that we have worked with, they have developed the things in a way where they say, okay, we're going to take the whole harmless dollar, but we will find a way not to use it on an ongoing basis. We will spend the money, but we will make sure we spend it for one-time expenses. Either you wanna go through the recruitment or you go through developing a nice new programs and things like that. So they will use it for a one-time basis, but not an ongoing basis. So somewhere along the line, district need to get involved in a conversation where they say, okay, if it is a seven million dollar, what can we do in year one? What can we do in year two? What can we do in year three? So you have to have systematic process of addressing the hold harmless. I wish the state have desired to extend it for a year or two down the road. That would be helpful, but that will not solve the problem for the, not only Peralta and the other district as well. You do have the neighboring districts who have the higher than yours hold harmless. And we are working with them and they say, okay, you really need to figure it out, how you are going to manage this part. Uh, so that's a long answer, but I just want you to know, the reason this whole harmless slide is here is to make sure that at least you have a meaningful conversation among the stakeholders. So they understand that we cannot be just taking the money and spend it and not worry about it. And I'm not saying you worry about it so you cannot function. You still have to function. But find a way to, to bring more students, bring more success and see that you, you, you increase your matrix going forward.
Thank you, thank you. Trustee Bonilla? Yes, no, thank you for that, CM. And I think what's really important here, and CM, you were part of our uh FICMAT um study. And so in the FICMAT study, uh, it was, it was highlighted that under the student success allocation on the, on the metric funding, that Peralta was losing uh approximately ten million dollars. Um, that was the gap that we had potential earnings or, yeah, potential earnings under the metric funding. And so that's a really important component that you're talking about, that even though the state hasn't given us guidance um on how to close the hold harmless uh potential gap for the twenty three twenty four year. We have in front of us an analysis on what can be done. So we're not operating from ground zero uh without, without knowledge, without an analysis, without knowing what our potential is and how we, um, and how we make that. Um, you know, how we hit those milestones as we're looking to, you know, close this gap. And so I think we're, are a little bit ahead because the question I was gonna ask you was, what do those comparisons look like? But it looks like you're gonna address that um further on. So I just wanna remind our trustees, our public, our faculty, staff administration, remember to go back to the FICMAT because there is a roadmap in there that gives us an analysis um about the student success allocation and where we are, where we were as a district back in twenty nineteen. So um, I just wanna thank you for that and I'm looking forward to the rest of the presentation.
And thank you, thank you trustee Boden.
Thank you. Trust, excuse me, VP Gonzalez UN?
Thank you. Um, first of all, I wanna say I'm really appreciating the intelligence, the discussion um and, and seeing board members really engaging. Um, so that's good. Um, secondly, I think we need to also keep in mind that even before this SCIF, we were in trouble. We were having declining enrollment every year. So it's not just the SCIF that was our problem. We were having trouble before that. Um, but I wanna also suggest um that while of course we, we must address this cliff, that maybe there's another strategy that we could consider and, and maybe twofold strategy. Um, first of all, I think we need to understand why the gap is growing and where we could invest these SCIF dollars in closing that gap. So presumably the idea is that we're supposed to be performing better on certain equity and placement and, and, and other metrics, success metrics, and that if we actually thought more carefully about that, that we could close the gap in part by generating more revenue as we're supposed to. And so it's not necessarily that we can only invest money as one-time money. It may be that once we determine where the infrastructure of the district needs to be filled out, that we would invest in building out that infrastructure. Um, and I think, you know, the charge around the BAM, the budget allocation model fifteen years ago when we were saying, look, the old way of doing just rolling over the budget wasn't working. We came up with this budget allocation model to try to rationalize budgets, have dollars flow to where performance was and where need was, et cetera. But then we got into the, kind of the problem of just rolling over those budgets without actually really thinking them through. And so I view this as an opportunity to rationalize our budget to really take this hold harmless money and use it productively and intelligently to really serve our students so that we're not saying, oh, God, in ten years, we're, or in three years, sorry, not ten. In three years, we have to cut seven or eight million dollars. But instead to say, oh, in three years, we will have closed that gap by performing better. So I, I think that's a slightly different strategy that I'd like us to consider. And then the last thing that I'd like to put out is that, you know, the SCIF was opposed by a lot of the constituencies across the state of California because pay for, pay for performance models have never worked especially well. You know, we saw that with No Child Left Behind. The, people will game the system. The, the formulas don't necessarily, they're not necessarily equitable. We know that big urban areas um with high cost are disadvantaged under the current formulas. And so part of what we're looking at is, can we also then see this as a political model and then begin to address that politically? So we absolutely need to perform better. We absolutely need to serve our community and students better. But I also think that part of that is then getting busy and engaging in that political struggle about the allocation of resources. We're a wealthy state. Let us try to figure out how to move some of those dollars more productively into areas like. We're a wealthy state, let us try to figure out how to move some of those dollars more productively into areas like ours to better serve our students. And, and that means getting busy doing what we do as elected officials, which is fighting the political realm. So I'm, I'm really appreciating the thought and just would like to raise up the idea that we've got some different strategies we should consider.
Um, I am going to do a time check because we are at eight forty six right now and I knew that, uh, C M, we have interrupted you. And thank you for minding our questions, they've been very helpful. So at this point, I'm, I'm, can we have C M go through the rest of the presentation without questions? Or what is your, what is the pleasure of, of those that are here? Because we want to get through the information. Um, so can we have C M go through them and then hopefully we'll have a few minutes at the end? This has been a rich conversation, so let's have him continue.
Yes.
President, just in the time check, how much time do we have left on this item that we'd allocated?
We've allotted an hour, so we started eight oh four, I believe.
And how much of that time do we have left?
Oh, we are at eight forty six right now.
Okay.
Four, so I believe.
Great.
Go ahead, C M.
I, thank you very much, President. Uh, so the, the bottom of this, so the next slide is basically we're talking about the numbers. And I think the question was raised in terms of where we are in our numbers. And as you can see in this particular slide, I have put everything side by side. So in eighteen nineteen, how you got paid, even though the state provides seventy, twenty, ten, your district got seventy one percent, nineteen percent, eight percent, become hundred percent of student center funding formula, hundred and fifteen million dollar, two million for the whole harmless and you got paid hundred and seventeen million dollar for eighteen nineteen. Looking at the bottom number is the nineteen twenty numbers. As you can see, your base number increased seventy three, seventy seven. But your supplemental decreased to seventeen point seven three. You lost a significant amount of students over there and your success matrix also reduced and become eight point five. You got hundred and fourteen million dollar, seven million dollar worth of, uh, hold harmless and got hundred and twenty one million dollar. But if you look at the matrix side, as a Peralta, as a district, you have lost in every single category. You have less F T S, you have a less supplemental students and you have less success matrix. So somehow other, what you got paid in eighteen nineteen is not the same at nineteen twenty. We will wait and see how your twenty twenty one numbers will come out. And when we put this side by side, you will see that your twenty twenty one numbers will be a lot different. I hope it, it hold the fort and become the same. But because I have the knowledge, unfortunately, I know those numbers will not be as high as we like to see. So this is where your numbers are. This comes straight out of the Chancellor's Office calculations, uh, which is called the P two report. I put the notation over there based on what date, so it is all public information and you can see the detailed part of it. This is where all work is cut out. This is where your numbers are. And going forward, you will see, when I will come back in a future year, future month, I will put side by side for twenty twenty one, so you will see your numbers a little bit better. But all three categories, you have less students, especially uh, your supplemental allocation. You have lost pretty close to about three thousand students in supplemental. And if, if the students are getting paid nine hundred dollar for each, prior year, you got twenty two point six million dollar. Nineteen twenty, you got twenty point two million dollar. You pretty much lost two point four million dollar in that one category alone. So I just want you to know, so when people see the numbers, then they raise the question of what have happened. And, and for that very reason, uh, Chancellor Walter was kind enough to ask us to come and assist to look at the data. What are our data, what did they are telling us? And, and are we missing something or are we collecting the data correctly? Or our processes are good or not? And that's what we have decided to, uh, come and assist the Peralta district to look at your data itself and see how it is being submitted. So this is where your numbers are. So the next slide is basically how all these numbers are came about. Majority, almost everything, all your F T S data is reported via something called apportionment attendance report called C C F S three twenty. It is required by Title Five. It is prepared, it is very prescriptive, accordance with the deadlines and instruction prescribed by the Chancellor's Office. So there's not a whole lot of room for people to kind of change. Very prescriptive how you report from the classroom into this particular form. And based on what you report, the Chancellor's Office will calculate your state apportionment allocation. Prior to a C F F, hundred percent of the funding was provided based on this one. But the last bullet is changed. The last bullet, it says, now it will be C C F S three twenty supplemental allocation and student success. So all three components will provide you something called your total computational revenue. This is how you get paid based on attendance report. So the next slide is providing you with, what do you do when the first report you provided to the state Chancellor's Office? Why it is so important? Every report is important, that the P one report represent something to do with July first to December thirty first data. They submit that one and that one will be provided back to the district in terms of what dollar you earned the last week in February. So this year, you have submitted your P one report. It will be certified in, uh, next month and the last week of February. And this one include your prior summer, whatever is left over, the current year summer actual F T S, actual F T S for fall and estimated for the spring semester. Remember, we all have to do this data as annualized. So when you submit the P one report, people make significant amount of error on a P one report. I'm, I'm not trying to, um, criticize anybody, but when I look at your three twenty report and the P one report was provided, you have something called special admit students reported as four hundred and fifty seven F T S. At P two, you have reported nine hundred and thirty seven. When you report your F T S late, you get penalized because you don't get paid for it immediately. Not only that, in the year like this, sometime you lose the funding because basically they will give you which one is the higher you want. And this is exactly what have happened to us this year. So we need to make sure that people who are preparing the P one report, they annualize their data. They don't have to be perfect, but they need to understand because how you going to get paid is during month of February, March, April and May will depend on what you submitted on your P one report. You submit less, you're gonna get paid less. You submit more, they'll take it away from you in a month of June. So you need to be pretty close to ninety nine point eight, nine percent accuracy. This provide the funding for state provide the estimated property taxes, enrollment fees and whatever is calculated state apportionment. So this is how the importance of the P one report is. So many district after so many years forget, neglect to annualize their data year after year, and we bring it to their attention as if somebody need to verify this data. This is not something you just sign it and send it in because your money comes from this particular report. The next slide is the P two report. Almost something similar what you see on the, for a previous slide, but now the data is basically from July one through the April fifteen. Again, we still have to annualize the data based on our historical knowledge of the district of what it goes. During this time, this will be certified last week of June. So you will know what you earn during the fiscal year. You will have a prior summer, current summer, actual fall, actual spring and whatever the positive attendance and all the data that you have, you make sure that you annualize. The state will provide again, they don't have all the final numbers, so they will give you estimated property tax, estimated enrollment fees, calculation of the apportionment. And the state will give you whatever they haven't paid so far until May, they will write you a final check and they say, okay, you got paid for the year and we will wait until your next report will come. Basically, majority of the district, when the state, state does that advanced apportionment for the following year, they use the P two data. So if your P two data is flawed and is not accurate, your advanced apportionment for next year will also carry some of the mistakes going forward. So the next slide is something called annual report. The annual report, which is due on the July fifteen of each year, this is, everything is actual now. There's nothing estimated, nothing annualized, nothing, whatever it is, it is. Summer, fall, spring, everything is all final. If external auditor find out that you have made an error in submitting your F T S or you find any gross error, state allow you to fi- uh, resubmit your F T S report annual by November first. After November first, you are locked out. You will not be allowed to change your data for F T S purposes from the Chancellor's Office. This will provide you the actual property taxes, actual enrollment fees, final state apportionment calculations. And also if the state have underpaid you, they will pay you now the following year in a February when they will do the recalculation. If they have overpaid you in a month of June, they will take it away from your current year's apportionment in February. So this is how the annual, this is how the importance of the P one, P two and three twenty annual report is. They're very important report. I would highly recommend for Peralta and any other district have more eyes check this report thoroughly before you submitting those report. First on a campus basis and then on a district when this, when they, they combine all the colleges, make sure that there are not as many error, uh, before you submit that particular report. So with that, uh, the next slide is probably for more question. And I do appreciate for allowing me to be with you to present this, uh, to the board, uh, and tonight.
Well, I would like to say thank you for that presentation. I think it, it gave us a lot of information. And again, like I said, it was the one of several that we're going to be hosting here. It looks like we have a couple of hands, um. Trustee Withrow, trustee Bonilla, and then trustee Gonzalez U N, unless these are up from last time.
Uh, just a, a quick question and I go along with the, um, comments on the presentation. It's very important, it's very thorough, covered a lot of things, um, raises a whole lot of questions in my mind. Do we have, in your opinion, the management information system in place to provide a periodic, and I mean in short interval kind of periodic, um, information flow to tell where we're going and how we're doing it?
Some of the district that we have worked with, when they submit their P one report, that is basically thoroughly vetted among the senior, senior managers, so they all know exactly where they stand. The same thing at the campus level, that the three V Ps or two V Ps on a campus and president do get to see that report before they submit. So they, they all should know exactly where we are heading and what are the, what is we need to do in order to improve.
This is, this is the sort of thing that comes across to me that, uh, it's not something you check into once a year. As a business, we would be looking at this on a month to month basis, is that too frequently?
Uh, no, it is not too frequently. I think the people who are in our business, they know very well, who are the V P I at each campuses, they know very well, when they put the schedule together, they know exactly how the enrollments are coming. Uh, one week prior to the semester start, one week into the semester, what are the census report? So this is, this is what they live and breathe. Uh, and if they are not, that means, uh, somebody is not following through in terms of what, what they really need to look for. Uh, they should have those things at their fingertips to see things through, uh, every single semester. Uh, every, every single, every time they are building the schedule, they should be able to know based on the last five, seven years of data, exactly how many F T S they should be able to generate.
I see a real concern here that, um, we could end up being gambling. Having a gambling thing and, um, um, a lot of what you talked about of, in a structured basis, um, I strongly believe that we need to take a board, we need to take a board, we need to, um, not say gee whiz, uh, hope the whole world's gonna twirl in a certain way and, uh, we're gonna have the money to cover this. And then find out where, I don't know, you talk about ten, twelve million dollars, not seven million dollars. We need to know that as we're progressing through and not gamble. Does that make sense?
Yes, we are trying to avoid the gambling. We like to have it more predictability and see where we are going rather than, rather than gambling. I couldn't agree more. But at the same time, I think the information is the power, information is a very important. And who have it, how they share with it and how they are bringing it to the board to, so the board can understand that we are going, we are doing well or not doing well. And if we are not doing well, what we should do to do well.
Good, thank you.
Um, trustee Withrow, I just, and everyone else, I just want to mention too that aside from having our budget study sessions and addressing these issues, we're also, remember we're moving with the subcommittee, the finance budget subcommittee. And this is a place, I think, where we can all coalesce around uh, and help do exactly what C M is suggesting, which is more eyes are better than no eyes or one pair of eyes uh, on these topics of, you know, data and submission deadlines and accuracy. And as you, I'll use your phrase of not gambling with the figures and making sure that we're putting in the right information. So, thank you. Uh, next hand is trustee Bonilla.
Yes, thank you. And C M, thank you for emphasizing, uh, kind of the checks and balance on the P one, P two um, and our annual three twenty reports. I think this is a, a critical piece. And because we as a board have just adopted our budget development calendar and are also in the process, as you heard from the chancellor, talk about the, our committee, our audit and finance committee. It seems to me that we should, um, strongly consider updating our tentative budget schedule to include, uh, the review of the P one, P two and the three twenty, I think to trustee Withrow's point. But this is where we get a head start and a heads up um, on what that data looks like and to ensure that it does go through an appropriate review and check imbalance so that there's a level of comfort, um, and, um, and that we understand that the, that the information is being verified and being looked over. Um, and so I would offer that as a suggestion to, um, to, to the board officers and chancellor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, trustee Bonilla. We, we could probably take a look and see what, how other districts handle, um, that aspect and we'll, we'll bring that back, um, as a question and answer. Um, V P Gonzalez U N.
Thank you, I'm, I'm mindful of time, so I'm, I'm not gonna go on. I, I put my questions in the chat. Um, uh, and ju- just real briefly, what's the scale of the loss that we? And just real briefly, what's the scale of the loss that we experience? If we, if we look over, you know, period of years, we've got inaccuracies reporting, you've explained how those hurt us financially. Do you have a sense of what the scale of that loss is on an annual basis if we look back over the last five years ballpark?
Well, I'll, I'll just venture to say that the last five years are not, you can't really go that way because we have different scales. Right. So before SCIF, it was, who do you have at census? This is sort of what you're getting. And now we have SCIF and SCIF's been around for two years. And I think if you look at what has happened since SCIF, you start there and you come to now. C M showed how, you know, it was a two million dollar decline. Some of it has to do with data. Most of it has to do with data when it comes to, you know, the, the success and the supplementals. So if you want to look before that, I think there's a different calculus that needs to be used to see what, what the situation was. So that I would encourage us to keep our eye folk, unless some miracle, or I don't know if it's a miracle, where we don't have a SCIF, we have some other formula. I think if we stay focused on the last two years, that's where, that's where all of our best information is going to come.
All right. So this is one of many moving parts and I'll just, I'll, I'll leave my comment in the chat. We can move on. Thanks.
Thank you for that. And so I, president Bonilla, don't, sorry, excuse me, I'm so used to saying that. President Reese, we have no other hands up that I can see.
Trustee Bonilla, is that a latent hand? Is that a residual hand or is that a new hand?
It's residual. Sorry, let me take that down.
All right. Well, this was incredibly helpful. I think we would all agree on so many different levels of understanding. And I have to say back to kind of what trustee Bonilla had said and the way that we'll talk about it afterwards. Chancellor Walter, we've really just kind of looked at those reports and we've just said, yeah, 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 yeah. And, and this has really flagged for us how critical and important the accuracy and verification is. So we'll certainly kind of figure that out, which has a Walter in terms of how we can support accuracy because we can't afford to not be accurate. Right? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much for allowing me to do this presentation. And again, I, I want to assure the board just because the data is, or the message is not that, that good, doesn't mean that we will not be able to come out of it. And the data is very powerful and it does provide us the guidance and the sense of direction to do something with it in, in a positive way. So I, I, I don't want to leave on a, on, on, on a note where he says, I'm a bad news bearer. I always find a way to figure it out, how to do better with the data regardless of what the data is. So I, I want to leave with that note and, and I, I know that you do have a very resilient faculty, staff, you have the new residents in place. And through the budget allocation model, what, what I like to do to work with the Peralta Community College District is to find a way to empower colleges in a way that they can serve the student in the best possible way. When they find a way that they are the one who are creating their own destiny to serve the students in the future years. That's the ultimate goal. Budget allocation model is not just, oh, you get two dollars, you get five dollars. No, no. How you get, how you make your own funding in a way where you can thrive in the community and find a way to serve the community and the students. So our, our approach is completely different. It's not just hear the money and let's find a way to give it to you. No. Find a way to how you make more by serving more. You know, so serve more and then you get more and do better. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you so much, C M. Back to you, president Reese.
Thank you, thank you. So let us move on to two point twelve chancellor's reports.
Okay. Thank you very much. As we normally do, we are going to have our president's reports and then I will say a few things. I want to first say that, oh, okay, well, I'm getting new information. So we're going to start out with Berkeley City College and Dr. Garcia.
Thank you. Apparently it took a moment there to find the mic. Good evening, trustees, interim chancellor Walter, colleagues and community members. On behalf of Berkeley City College, I wanted to share a few highlights as part of the president's report this evening. The first is that the Community Health Education Institute of Berkeley, who is led by executive director Pauline Bondano. Oh, and actually, Maisha, there will be no need to share that just yet because I want to be able, thank you, I just want to be able to share a student work image. Thank you so much. Has joined with Berkeley City College's Artist Resisting Soda Public Health Club to sponsor a contest. Yes, in college, you can pretty much create a club for everything. And this contest is in collaboration with the Center for Science on Public Interest, which is located in Washington DC. This is where the conversions of public work and interest areas, so the city of Berkeley provided grant funding related to its, what we have lovingly called the soda tax, the tax on sugar sweetened beverages to promote a healthy checkout lane. And this partnership allowed for Berkeley City College students to enter a contest to provide a digital media platform regarding this. And so what I'm going to share is our first place winners, we had two. Brian Pham for his piece titled Don't Be Deceived and Jerry Shaw for his Water Winds. But the one for this evening that I would like to share is Don't Be Deceived. So I'm going to take a moment here. And this will be displayed throughout the city of Berkeley in various local businesses. A digital media art student, highly informative about the impacts of sugar sweetened beverages. I do want to take a note here that right in the middle, there's one crossed out phrase that says weight loss, crossed out, and then it says weight gain. And really offering a commentary here on the impacts of the diet soda industry. What's great about these images is that they will be throughout the city of Berkeley. They will note that the illustration is by Brian Pham, that it's sponsored by the Berkeley City College Artist Resisting Soda and that this is part of the Healthy Berkeley Initiative. So for those of our community members that shop throughout the local city displays, when things are out of the pandemic, this would probably be a little bit more obvious. If you're like me, you just try to get into the store and, and leave as soon as possible. But we're really pleased because this really highlights the talents of our students and a special recognition to both a faculty member, so Michelle Bobo, I believe I'm, I'm pronouncing his name correctly, was the faculty member who assisted the students. And our classified professional Jasmine Martinez has been the club's advisor. And so this is definitely a proud moment for displaying the digital media arts of Berkeley City College. Additionally, what I'd like to share as part of the president's report is that the president's task force on equity and racial justice has been continuing its work related to intentional focus on professional development of flex days. And as others have mentioned previously, we do have flex days in the next coming days. We're welcoming faculty, classified professionals and administrators. And most recently, we shared a webinar titled Insurrection at the Capitol: Justice and Reconciliation on Our Campuses. And all three of the scholars who were a part of that recording are currently working not just with Berkeley City College, but also with some of our other sister colleges. And that's Mr., excuse me, Dr. Frank Karas, Dr. J. Luke Wood and Mr. Lasana Hotep. So feeling really pleased that not only at Berkeley City College, but throughout the district, the work that we're doing to respond to local cultural needs around issues of equity and racial justice, but also in response to the call to action as part of statewide efforts. And the last item that I wanted to highlight, and this is certainly, I think, timely, given the report, the study session that we have just heard, is that Berkeley City College, with the support of Dr. Siri Brown at the district chancellor's office, we are working to finalize three C cap agreements with local school districts with whom we have not yet partnered, and that is with Berkeley Unified School District, Emory and Albany. And what this will do is increase the partnership, again, not just for Berkeley City College, but all the colleges in the district to support dual enrollment, enhance those pathways to completion. And as the previous study session just revealed, has direct connection, not just to providing access for youth in the community to come to our colleges, but also in support of supplemental success and base allocation. So we're very excited about that. And I'm just absolutely thrilled and grateful to Dr. Siri Brown, our vice president instruction, Kuni Hay, and vice president of student services, Stacy Shears, for their work and leadership. And lastly, we do have, I wanted to share as of today that on a closing note, the enrollment data for Berkeley City College shows that we do have a head count as of today of six thousand twenty-one. Interestingly enough, last year at this time, we had five thousand seven hundred and eighty-five, so we are seeing a growth in head count. Our FTS is at eighty-one point eight percent of the target with one thousand three hundred and eighty FTS. And we did see a two point three increase over the weekend. And I truly believe that all of the community efforts that have taken place to ensure that students get the support with express registrations has yielded that increase. And we're still in, in registration enrollment period, but I'm certainly feeling really pleased of the enrollment is everyone's business approach at Berkeley City College. And with that, I will conclude my president's report. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Garcia. Dr. Nathaniel Jones, would you please share with us College of Alameda?
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, president Reese, trustees, chancellor Walter, colleagues and guests. I'm delighted to provide the president's report for the College of Alameda. As you may recall, on December the sixteenth and seventeen, College of Alameda, along with the other colleges and the district, hosted the ACC JC Special Report Team Visit. The chair of the, of the team was Dr. Kendrick Morel from Southwestern College, along with ACC JC president and staff liaison Stephanie Droger and Los Rios Community College District Vice Chancellor of Finance, Mr. Mario Rodriguez. Following the site visit, we received a draft report that we were provided for the review and correction of errors of facts. This report was reviewed and provided back to Dr. Morel on December the twenty eighth with our comments. In the report, the visiting team noted a few particular concluding remarks. Overall, they found that we were a committed, competent group of leaders at the district and the college who are making earnest progress towards addressing the commission's concern as noted in the various reports and letter. The district overall needed to stabilize the leadership, both at the district office and in the college, and that we have done so. The College of Alameda and the district are working more closely together in order to sustain fiscal viability. While there is still work to be done, the team noted, evidence demonstrates that the College of Alameda and the district are following their plans and moving in the right direction. This is good news for the many, many hours of hard work that has been undertaken by our colleagues throughout the district. On January the fourteenth, I, along with my colleagues, presidents, as well as the chancellor, appeared before the commission and gave presentations to them. There were a couple of key points that I made relative to the College of Alameda. My colleagues, the other presidents, made similar presentation. The ones that I noted was the fact that the College of Alameda had thoughtfully and proactively addressed the concerns raised by the commission in working collaboratively with the district. Additionally, we made other points speaking about the integration in terms of our robust planning aligned with, with enrollment plans and other things. Other things that I wanted to mention relative to our report was I met with the North Alameda Adult Education Collaborative, as well as the Alameda Science and Technology Institute High School to explore opportunities for greater synergy and collabora- collaboration. These efforts were aimed at seeking expansive opportunities to grow dual enrollment, non-credit course offerings, specifically to try to deal with the quote unquote gap in terms of the funding by growing our way out of the problem rather than reductions. Additionally, we have one of our professors who was Mr. Sylvester Henderson, who was recognized in a feature of Intelligent Health Higher Education Thought Leaders. The article applauded Professor Henderson's numerous professional accomplishments and awards. So congratulations to you, Professor Henderson. Additionally, our certified nursing assistant program continues to receive praise, praise from, from the press. And, and so we have more than four hundred students that have shown interest and a hundred and forty-one students wind up to attend a mandatory orientation. So this concludes my report at this moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jones. And we'll move on to Dr. Johnson. Have you give us the report for Merritt College?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you. Just want to start by saying, start with some good news, that in the weeks leading up to the start of the semester, we really accelerated our, our efforts at Merritt and the areas of registration, financial aid, counseling. And the high point of those efforts was on January ninth, a Saturday, we held our expressive enrollment event where we opened up multiple departments virtually for the day, which included financial aid, counseling, the welcome center, CalWorks, student activities and campus life, student accessibility services, et cetera. So I just wanted to express my appreciation for the faculty members, the administrators, and most especially the classified professional staff members who took the time to convene on a Saturday and serve what I'm told was close to one hundred individual students. So I just want to say thank you and, and, and want you to please know that you are making a difference and we appreciate you. I also wanted to take a moment to highlight a particular program related to student success I'm really excited about. And that's the next step program. So for the uninitiated, the purpose of the next up program is really to provide support in the areas of helping with books and supplies, transportation, tutoring, emergency housing for current and former foster youth, which is a group that I think is often overlooked. So at Merritt, we're really encouraged by the strides that our next, next up program is making under the leadership of newly appointed director, Ms. Margie Rubio. And I just want you to know that our enrollment and retention for that population is steadily growing. And for the first time, the spring of everything goes according to plan, we will have our first next up student graduates for this, for this spring semester, which is really exciting. We're also in the process of hiring some next up student, student ambassadors. We're also in the process of hiring some Next Up Student Ambassador to manage our social media platforms, to increase our outreach and visibility, you know, Facebook, TikTok, Instagram, Snapchat, Twitter. Got to be more than a little impressed. I got all those right, by the way, just now. But, you know, reaching our student population that pays attention to those social media platforms. And we're also in the process with Next Up, planning a series of workshops in the upcoming weeks to focus on topics such as time management, financial literacy, transfer readiness and self-care. So finally, and this is not something I was looking forward to sharing for the second straight board meeting. We find ourselves in a place of mourning and remembrance as we lost two more pillars of the Merritt community. It's been mentioned a little earlier by Donald Moore, but I just need to share with you that on January 12th, the morning of January 12th, we did lose Dr. Bill Love. Dr. Love was a monumental figure at Merritt College. He's been in the district, started his career close to 50 years ago and was really the pivotal figure behind our Colsor Program, which is a community social services program. His passion for teaching, commitment for students, and fearless advocacy for the things that he believed in are the attributes that most of us will remember him for. I have a little bit of news about his service that his family does not mind me sharing. I sent out a communication. His service is going to be Tuesday, February 2nd at 11:00 a.m. And we'll provide more information. It's a virtual service. More information about how those who are interested can access that. I also want to say related to that, Ms. Anita Black, her service, it's going to be a tough week, is Wednesday, February 3rd at noon. And I also will provide more information about how to access that because it'll be live streamed. And finally, it's gone to my attention that the mother of ethnic studies and black studies at Merritt College, as Dr. Siri Brown referred to her, Dr. Cecilia Arrington passed away on Christmas. And she came to Merritt College in 1969 to teach black studies, which at the time was an emerging and groundbreaking academic endeavor. And eventually she became the Chair of the Merritt College Ethnic Studies Department. And she served in that role for 25 years. So just with that said, you know, you know, we're going to recognize and honor, you know, those who we lost. But at the same time, we're going to keep, you know, pick up the torch and carry it forward and conduct ourselves at Merritt College in a way that's befitting the legacy that they've that they've left. So that's my report this evening. Take care of yourselves and each other.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Johnson. All right. Well, we will want to keep all those families and those individuals and the folks that they interact with and the circle that they touch in mind. And we'll we'll perhaps see if we can do something more formal. All right, Dr. Bessikoff, Laney College.
Good evening, Chancellor, members of the Board and colleagues in education. On January 23rd and 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Laney College will once again hold its virtual One Stop Saturday events. I think I'm beginning to want to call this our unstoppable force when it comes to things we do on campus. Back in fall 2019, we managed to hold a very successful One Stop Saturday, even though our campus didn't have any power. And of course, the last two times we've done this, now we've done it virtually. And it's really an opportunity for faculty, so many staff and student services, counselors, administrators to come together and support students. They'll be receiving that support in breakout rooms from services and learning communities that include financial aid, admissions and records, counseling, and also those learning communities such as Puente and Omojo Braca. Information and links to the events are available on social media and have also been included in your board report. As as with previous years, in addition to, you know, our students and prospective students, we really also want to invite members of the community to attend these events on Saturday. And speaking about community, at Laney College, outreach does not just mean today's students or but it also means the communities and the community leaders that we work with. Along with A Pastor Dr. David Lee, Ms. Arlene Lontak in the President's Office, and community leaders Tamoko Ha and Jessica Lee, we've reached out to a number of Oakland's Asian Pacific Islander community leaders. In addition to a number of one-on-one Meet the New President meetings that we've been having, we actually held two meet and greet sessions on January 13th and 14th. These two virtual receptions provided opportunities for discussion among what ended up totaling 20 such leaders. And really, we came together and not only identified common but distinctive needs that we we have, but also and ways that we can collaborate. The first of the two meetings was devoted to our business community leaders. Well, the second one was an opportunity to connect with a lot of community leaders whose nonprofit and other service organizations provide just invaluable support to Oakland. In subsequent communications I'll be having with you as the Board and Chancellor, I will actually be providing a complete list of the many partnerships that have either been formed or regalvanized over the past few weeks. And I'm very excited to do so. And this initial work with Oakland's API community is just the first of many steps to collaborate with leaders of the many communities that we serve. And I'll go ahead and close my report tonight by actually sharing a tangible collaboration with one of these very same partners, which is the East Bay Asian Local Development Corporation. Laney College is pleased to continue its partnership with them to provide free tax preparation services to both students and staff members virtually. Each year, the EBLTC hosts Vito, which is an IRS program that trains volunteers to provide free tax preparation for low incomes individuals and families. It is an important and highly impactful poverty evaluation, excuse me, alleviation tool that is paired with a savings matching initiative, thus encouraging those using the service to put at least part of their refund in the bank. EBLTC's volunteers each year prepare over 1,700 returns and secure over $2.6 million in refunds for the community. And Laney College is so proud to collaborate as tax season comes upon our community. Also, this coming Friday is Laney College Flex Day, and we have a number of great events. But closing the day, we will also be having a memorial service for Dr. Stephen Corlett. And I know that many members of the Peralta community knew Dr. Corlett, and we certainly invite you to join us. This concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Bessikoff. Okay, so before I give my report, are there any questions from the trustees for the presidents?
I don't see any questions, so I think we're good. Thank you all for the work that you're continuing to do.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I will just have brief remarks as I try to just give a little bit of an update on what's been happening. So I just want to let everyone know that at the last meeting, I mentioned that the Board of Governors was going to be meeting and that Peralta was supposed to be on their agenda. But in fact, we were not on their agenda. So we have heard, though, from Chancellor Eloy Oakley's office that they've received our information that we provided at the end of the year last year, and we're waiting to hear back. So as soon as we hear anything about whether or not we're going to be agendized, we will, of course, let everyone know. So I I take it as a as a positive sign, but maybe that's just me. I also want to reiterate what the presidents mentioned about the meeting that we had before the accrediting commission. It was a very positive meeting. I think it went very well. We didn't have anyone asking questions, and so the presentation was well organized. And we're looking forward to hearing positively from the commission. However, again, to mention, we could hear from them between now and a close in date. But also to remind everyone, we're looking for their virtual site visit for the ICERS, the first part of March, March 1 through the 4th. So it could be that we won't hear anything until after that date. But again, we'll keep you posted. In terms of what we're doing in the COVID-19 stay-at-home order, as you know, as I mentioned, that the stay-at-home order has been extended indefinitely. However, because of the impact of the stay-at-home order, we have had a good analysis, an excellent legal opinion provided for both the athletic conditioning and the face-to-face, hard-to-convert, nonessential and essential classes. And I recognize that it feels like it's been an eternity, but we know that the whole harmless, excuse me, whole harmless, I got that on my mind. The stay-at-home order was extended. We were thinking that it was going to be lifted on January 4th, so we've been in pause. But right now, the next couple of days, we will have an announcement come out so that people know what they need to do or what they can do and so on. And in that vein, I just want to mention a couple of things. We're we're prepared with our PP and E for folks to come on campus this evening. We're considering a contract with InGenesis to help provide screenings and contact tracing so that people will remain safe. Because that is, of course, our highest priority is to make sure our students, faculty, staff and community are as safe as possible in this environment. I also want to mention briefly, in this, in the context of COVID, that, you know, these are changing conditions and we are doing our best to be responsive to them. I do know, however, and I want to mention that there's been some conversation about this Curative organization. And I just want to let people know a few points. First of all, Curative was offered to us by the Alameda County as a free service. And this organization provides testing for the Department of Defense and the U.S. Congress. And they have over 120, 100 sites in Northern California alone. There has been some controversy with them regarding some activities that they've had in Los Angeles, and they have not continued their work there, so that could be contributing to some of it. I also want to mention that we are an additional insured on Curative's insurance, and that gives them the ability to do testing in the parking lot, and therefore they're not actually coming onto the campus. We're also working on an MOU that is under review with our legal team. So the information that's on the website regarding Curative gives the testing requirements, gives the information that's needed for health practitioners and so forth to conduct tests and also gives information about how to ensure that the testing is, you know, accurate. And if it isn't, how to go about making sure it is. So I just wanted to mention that to you, that this is this is something that was offered to us from Alameda County. It's not something that we have contracted with, and we'll be on top of it as we're as we're moving forward. I also want to mention just a bit about the positive information that we received on the Governor's Budget Proposal. This has gone out to the community as an announcement, but I want to highlight the fact that the budget anticipates, but we can't really rest in this anticipation. But the budget anticipates positive income from the the folks in California, and we're looking forward to something positive with the May revise. But we were looking at that last year, and I don't mean to be cynical. I just mean to be realist. However, one of the things that's in this budget, in the proposed budget, that may not have to wait until the May revise is this notion of buying down the deferrals, which, as you know, for me and everyone else who has to deal with the deferrals is really positive because we'll be receiving revenue as we're supposed to within the budget year. And you can look at more detail at the Governor's Proposed Budget if you would like. But we also received funding recently from this recent stimulus package going into each of the colleges for our students. And then finally, in the budget, there are, there's still opportunity to do advocacy work, and I would like us to be thinking about how to advocate for one-time dollars to help us in a myriad of different ways. One of them, of course, could be with technology, learning platforms, or what have you. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. And I believe that pretty much brings me to the end of my remarks. I'm very happy that we're moving forward in this new year. I'm very happy that we're seeing positive, well, declining infection rates in our COVID numbers here. And I really want to thank everyone for their patience as we try to navigate these these really, really treacherous times with COVID-19 to help keep everybody safe. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, President Reese.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Yes. I'm so encouraged by our students coming out and participating in this level of government. They're very passionate about continuing sports and having conditioning. Coach Beam asked a question surrounding when. I know we said soon, but is there a date that sports will continue? And is there a date that we can get back to our students and let them know? As of this day, you can go back to conditioning?
Oh, thank you so much for the question. We we will be working on that tomorrow, and we should have a communication out either tomorrow or the next day, giving people guidance as to what can transpire.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. I see none. So let us, thank you, Chancellor, and thank you, Presidents, once again. We will move on in the agenda. Let's go to 3.1, First Reading on Proposed Board Policies. Chancellor?
Thank you. So these are proposed, sorry, these are, is the first reading for board policies, speakers decorum, standards of scholarship, community service programs, admissions and concurrent enrollment, and domestic partners. Again, first reading, so the trustees are asked to read the changes or additions and be prepared to perhaps vote on them at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Any questions on these? Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. Can I have a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee, second by trustee Withrow. Discussion, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Okay, Student Trustee Yuruni.
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonia.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
Yes.
Trustee Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes for consent calendar.
Thank you for that. Let's move on to the action items. 7.1, Consider Approval of the Revised Budget for Fiscal Year 2021, 2020 to 21. Do they have a motion?
So move approval. Move approval.
First, trustee Bonia, second discussion. Roll call, please, Misha.
What was the item number again?
7.1, trustee.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who made the first motion?
Gonzalez, you win.
Okay. Okay, Student Trustee Yuruni.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonia.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
Yes.
Yes.
And trustee Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you for that. Seven point two, consider selecting three community members from the Board of Trustees.
You want to mute the President Reese?
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me now? Seven point two, consider selecting.
Still on mute. No, she's not on mute.
Can you all hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, so seven point two, consider selecting three community members for the Board of Trustees nominees who will serve on the Chancellor Selection Committee in accordance with Board Policy two, four, three, one Chancellor selection. Um, and so this, we added on to this particular agenda, even though it was originally on our search agenda. Vice Chancellor McKinley, do you want to maybe take care of this in terms of our, the process itself? Do we want to put the, the names up?
Yes, I think if you, uh, if you uh click on the uh, you know, the icon that shows the um, you know, next to, next to the item itself, uh you'll be able to see a list of names and uh who they, who they represent. Can everyone see that?
No.
Yes.
Oh, you mean on our, okay.
On the agenda, I'm sorry, yes.
Or ducks, I can pull that up.
Yes, please.
Madam President, just a quick question. Um, I, I may have missed, did we move and second this item for discussion?
Oh, my apologies. Yes, uh, motion please?
So moved.
First, and second by Bonia. And now we are in discussion. Um, if there's no discussion, we can move on to voting.
How are, how are we selecting these? What, what is, what is the process? There has to be a discussion. What is the process?
Yes, V C McKinley, I'm going to, I'm going to have you take this over just because uh this was what we were doing at the last meeting.
Right, so we'll be doing the last, the special meeting, yes. So yes, thank you very much, uh, uh, President Reese and trustee. Uh, I, we believe we have, um, I think Mark has a, a new form for us. We had a selection form, if you recall, from the last meeting that we didn't get to because of the, you know, moving this forward to this, this current meeting. That, that would help you as a tool, if you wish to use it, to uh, you know, make a selection with regard to three of the nominees. If you remember, the, the board policy uh allows for up to three community members. And as you can see, we have a number of nominees. Now we have twelve. And of those twelve, uh, the, the task is for the board to select three. And if you choose to use that, that form, uh, we, we will, we can display that. I believe that uh the man aboard, uh, secret uh clerk can do that and let you see what it is. If you want to do that, then you can complete it, send it to Mark and we would have a tally uh for you to use as a, a basis for further discussion.
Are we, are we doing that tonight?
Yes, we will be. And so I believe that the form right now is in, obviously we've never, you know, this is a little bit difficult because we're doing it on Zoom, I, I understand. Um, but what we have right now in the chat, I believe, is the form that Mark had put there. And so all of the individuals are on that particular form. Um, and since we've all reviewed the individuals with their buyer, with this, with our data, if we could go to the form um and write down our V C McKinley, or do we want to rank to five just in case people fall out? Uh, your.
Well, also we discussed the, the notion of having an alternate. So if you were to have, choose at least four, then if one of those folks, something happened, they couldn't do it, they couldn't meet the, the requirements, then you would have an alternate, yes.
And then I would, and then please tell me if I'm wrong, uh, V C McKinley, but you will tally our documents and then we will have to, we will loop back to this. So we can either wait or we can go back to this particular action item, however you want.
You can move back to it once we have those results, yes.
Please, trustees, let me know what is unclear there because I know that it's a, it's a bit kind of challenging.
Where is the form?
If you go in the chat, am I correct, Mark? If you go in the chat, the form is right there.
That's right. I, I just sent it uh individually to each member.
Sorry, I have a quick question. I know you mentioned, sorry to go back a little bit, you mentioned possibly having an, like choosing an alternate. How would we be able to do that? If we're not, are we not going to be able to, or?
V C McKinley, do we want to do one, two, three, four?
Yes, one, two, three, four, and that way you would.
What is the?
You would have, you would have an alternate.
And what is? I'm sorry, what is the highest ranking, V C McKinley?
Well, this is, there, there really is, there's not a, you know, there's not a Likert scale. It, it's really selecting, you would only select, in this case, then you'd only, we were going to say three, but in this case you would select four. So of the twelve names, each trustee would only select four of the names. And then we would use that composite as a basis for your discussion or your final selection. It's not the selection itself, it's simply a tool to help you uh get to that point.
Okay.
And so presumably the Director Johnson or Vice Chancellor McKinley will announce the top four
Yes.
straw poll winners.
Yeah.
For possible consideration, but it's not binding.
That's right, uh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right. Director Johnson will have that information.
Thank you. I think I filled that out quickly with three and then I did a supplemental with one. So when you see the tallies, you'll see I voted twice, but I, I didn't uh I didn't vote like the full slate twice.
Some illegal voting.
I did the same thing, uh trustee Gonzalez, except I revoked it. So Mark, you're just going to have to decipher. On my second submission, I did write that it was my four selection. So you can hopefully see the second submission. I voted twice for trustee Jenkins and one for trustee Withrow, so.
Um, so uh, please let me know how we're doing in terms of who has not yet. So that we don't rush through the process. Does the silence mean that we have all submitted?
Yes.
Okay, just. I think we're waiting for Director Johnson to uh do the arithmetic.
Madam President, while we are waiting for the arithmetic, um, might we move the rest of the agenda? Uh, and if that is possible, I would like to move items seven point three through seven point seven on our action calendar. If there are no objections from our colleagues, and then we can take care of that vote and circle back around to this. Would that be appropriate?
That's a fantastic idea.
I'll second that.
So consider that a motion, great.
Okay. We've got a motion by.
What are you proposing?
Uh, to just consider the balance of the agenda on the action items, trustee Handy, seven items, seven point three through seven point seven. I'm perfectly happy to remove any of those if there is controversy on any of those items, but lacking that.
Okay, no, no, we have, we want to discuss some items.
All right.
So, can, can you translate this for us?
Seven point three and seven point seven, I'd like to have discussion.
Okay. Okay, Tristan.
I'll second the balance.
Director Johnson.
Mark?
I'll, I'll second the balance.
Now I'm confused because we've got.
How about if we?
I'm just a little confused because now we've got a screen up, so I don't know where we are.
It's okay. Can we pull that back and deal with just the nominees right now?
Yeah. Yes.
Sure.
Mark, can you just translate this so that we all know what we're looking at? Clearly. Or Vice Chancellor McKinley, whomever.
All right, so if you, if you look at.
Point of information.
Go ahead, Mark, yeah.
Question?
Point of information, so trustee Bonia voted twice. I'm seeing a total number of votes, was trustee Bonia's second set of votes taken out, or did she vote twice and those were now added in?
Yeah, that was my question. We have eight for a candidate and there's not eight of us.
Well, there is with student trustee.
Uh, true.
Yeah, there's a total of eight.
But I think we probably but I, I think there are overvotes here. Isn't a student trustee voting advisory vote? I'm sorry, isn't a student trustee advisory vote?
Yes.
Yes. But I think the real question here is that we've got an overvote because um trustee Bonia voted three times once and then four times the second time and I, and I have a feeling that the first vote was not taken out.
Director Johnson, can you clarify?
But Director Johnson would know this.
We cannot hear you.
You're muted.
Okay. Yes, the it looks like there is a test at least one test vote in here.
Okay, can, can we redo by extracting that?
Yeah. It'll take a few minutes for me to work on it.
Okay, then may I?
Apologies.
No worries. May I suggest then that we go back to, we will loop back around. Um, but let us, before you put it back on the screen, let us know that uh you are ready so that we can, we can pace it accordingly. There was originally a motion on the table, but I also believe that trustee Handy had questions about two items. So to there, why don't we go to seven point three? Because I believe that that was one of the two items, trustee Handy.
Through the, through the president, can I withdraw my second? So that we can unravel the motions on the floor. So I'll remove my second to trustee Gonzalez's motion.
Excellent. And then trustee Gonzalez, you win. Are you?
Trustee Handy, which were the items that you, that you wanted discussion on?
Seven point three and seven point seven, is that correct, trustee Handy? That's what I thought I heard.
If that is correct, then I would like to move approval of items seven point four, seven point five and seven point six.
I seconded that before.
Okay, can we?
Okay.
Before, can we, before we do that, can we ask trustee Handy?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was muted. You were correct, seven, three and seven, seven.
Okay, now trustee Gonzalez, you win.
So I'd like to move approval of seven, three, seven, four and seven, five.
No, you mean.
And seven, six. I'm sorry, seven, four, seven, five and seven, six. Thank you.
Second.
Excellent. Okay, discussion, roll call. I'm sorry. Roll call.
Okay, student trustee, trustee Yuruni.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins. Trustee.
Yes. Yes.
He Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonia.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
Yes.
And trustee Reese.
Yes.
Same motion passes.
Thank you for that.
That's for seven point four, seven point five, seven point six.
Okay. Procedurally, and I only need one person to respond here, since we are at seven point three at this point, should I carry, should we do the, the, the clump, the cluster together, seven point four to seven point six first, the vote on that, or do, shall I go back to seven point three? Uh, either Natasha or.
I believe we've just voted on seven point. I, I think we just voted on seven, four, five and six.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to seven point three then, seven point.
So moved.
Uh.
I'm sorry, seven point three has already been moved in second. We're just waiting for Mark to come back. No, we're, we're on seven point. Mark is dealing with seven point two, so I'm now moving item seven point three. We need a second and then discussion. That's right. I'll second, yes. From trustee Handy. Thank you.
And discussion trustee Handy? Or whomever else.
I'm sorry, are you ready for discussion?
We are for seven point three.
Okay, so um, I'm, I was looking at this and the first thing that strikes me is um that we're looking at a contract with a company that's coming from another state. We have Alameda County. We also, as a board, as a board, Peralta has a small, local and minority participation policy first. So why are we looking outside of the immediate area? Why are we putting testing sites on each campus when we don't necessarily have students on the campuses? And you cannot throw a rock in Oakland and not find a testing site? They are within every block. I understand that in the athletics area, they have a specific um testing protocols. Uh, Coach Beam was working on that long before um the cancellation, cancellation of the program. So I'm trying to understand why we are looking outside of the county and actually would be paying more than if the Alameda County was doing it. And then why are we doing it?
Chancellor Walter, are you, would you like to respond to that?
Sure, thank you. So um, thank you for the question. InGenesis is providing contract, contact tracing and screening for um individuals coming onto our campuses or into our district office. And these people, this organization is coming to us with the expertise and individuals who can provide this service for us as we are in COVID nineteen. And this is part of the protocol that we need to follow in order to be able to, to address the needs of the community and the students, faculty and staff as we continue to navigate the COVID nineteen pandemic. In terms of the selection of this firm, we were moving to pick a firm that had the the expertise, not to say that there aren't other firms, but the firm that has expertise in healthcare and professional provision of these tests. And I would like to ask Dr. McKinley if he would give us a little bit more insight onto the skills that these individuals will bring to us, how they'll be deployed, what we'll be doing and for how long.
Be, before we go to him, I need some clarification on something you just said. You said that um these are following protocols, but Alameda County has already set the protocols. So how is this different? We don't have people necessarily coming into the district. Why would someone come to the district to get tested? People get tested by their own homes. They get tested. People get tested by their own homes. They get tested at their own churches. As I said, you cannot throw a rock and not find testing centers. Just between Seminary Avenue and Allen Temple Church, there may be four other sites that have been doing the testing. And all of the testing goes into the contact tracing. So I'm trying to understand who would be utilizing these services. I mean, to me, this is, this is nothing about this particular. There's no shade on this particular organization, but why are we doing this? Because we are not at the campuses and the students basically are not at the campuses.
I'm sorry, trustee Handy, I used the wrong word. I should have said screening, not testing. I apologize.
Okay, so but that's the same, it's the same thing, screening. You can, we actually have the, one of the largest organizations that does the screening and accurately is Roots. And that is an organization that we contract with through our health centers. So Roots, Root Center, and Dr. Nahha Abalata is over that. And she's the one who is constantly giving presentations, cast on the on social media. And that is the one place that our students who were students who had graduated and were transferring and going off to their colleges, one specifically to Alabama, was able to go to Root Center and have her testing done in three days. So that she was able to fly off and move into her dorm after isolating. So again, we are already contracted, I mean, we already have a relationship with the largest organization. And even when our. Our people were having challenges and we had our initial COVID scare. Some of them chose to go to their own provider Kaiser, but it was actually faster for them to just go down the street and drive through Roots or Allen Temple and have their results in three days.
So I would like to, I appreciate that and thank you. And we do, we do recognize that Roots does certain aspects of this, but they are not on our campuses, not at our district office when people are coming to work or people are coming to class. So for example, when you go to certain organizations and you're going in, they have people there taking your temperature, asking you questions, where do you, you know, these COVID-related questions, taking down your information. And should you not, should you take, you have your temperature taken? And it be higher than a normal temperature? There are other steps that come after that, so we're not allowing people to enter the buildings unless they pass the screening or health check. That's what we're calling it. So that's a different service than what Roots Clinic provides. Now, this is where I was going to ask Dr. McKinley to give us the, the sort of the conditional movement through a process for someone who doesn't make the screening test. In other words, if I come in and my temperature is higher than it needs to be, then there are certain other movements that I have to make through a process to help me.
You go home. That's what all organizations are doing. If you have a temperature, you leave and you're not allowed to return without a COVID test. Youth uprising, you walk in, regular employees have the the temperature and they take your temperature on your forehead. And if you're not high, you're able to come in. If you are, you're asked to leave and go and see your provider. So even if we have these people come through, they have to go to their own medical provider. Hold on, Cindy, they have to go to their own medical provider. If I came in and I had a temperature, if I left, I wouldn't be going, I wouldn't be following up with your people. I would be going to Kaiser. And I think most, so I'm just not, this to me is something that just doesn't make sense. Because these services are everywhere. Just because we have the money doesn't mean we need to spend it, doesn't mean that is something that we're getting. Are the, you know, the best bang for a buck. I can't imagine anyone who is, because first, it's very few people coming in. Who is going to get in their car and drive down to the district and seek out somebody to take a test for them? That's just not going to happen.
Trustee Handy, I hear you. I hear what you're saying, absolutely. Maybe one of the things I'll share, Dr. Walters, is as the three of us, board leadership and Dr. Walters, were talking about the return to campus and obviously the desire to get as many students back, including, including our athletes back. We had to think about all the possible parameters and we had to think about it in a very short period of time because people were wanting and desirous of an actual date. How soon can we do this? How how quickly can we do this? And so one of the things that we talked about definitely were PPEs, Plexiglas structures, as well as screeners. And screeners would be that that first kind of place to go to at the particular campuses for the students that are going in there and particularly Lady, because you have the CTE classes. You have all of the classes that are going to be, not many, but there are going to be students on campus. And so what we are trying to do is we are trying to do our due diligence that's going to allow us to protect the students so that as they're in their CTE classes, their lab, their studio, their athletic conditioning, we can documented, in a documented fashion, have done all of the processes necessary for that. And yes, there are screeners that they could go to. They could go to Roots, they could go to Kaiser, they could go to a variety of different places. We're talking about the students before, when they get on campus, before they go to the lab. They need to pass the screener like we all do whenever we go to the, to any office. We need to pass through the screener and if they do not make it through the screener because of their temperature, they need to go either, go elsewhere, either testing or to the hospital, as you were saying. But we needed the screeners on campus to facilitate a return to campus that was quick and that was efficient. And this was, this was our our pathway forward. I believe I have a couple trustees in the queue, trustee Delphine Polk, and then trustee Bonilla.
Sure, I have a couple of questions. So one, what is the timeline for these screeners was my first question. Second is more detailed, I guess, explanation of what screening means. I've been through a couple of them, but all of them have been different, so I'd just be curious to see what the screening would, you know, what that would entail. And then third. I think that's all I have for now. I have one more, but I'll I'll stop there.
Thank you. I would like to ask Dr. McKinley to please respond.
Yes, so the 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 plan is we begin this in February 1st, and that's when the screeners would actually begin screening. The screeners will, they that will, the screening will be conducted by certified nursing assistants. They will have a supervisor that will supervise that team. Each, they will use the CDC checklist. There's a checklist issued by the CDC. That's the questionnaire that you have to go through. Have you been in contact with someone with COVID-19? Have you had a positive test or have you had a test within the last 14 days, those types of things? And take their temperature. If they, if they are unsuccessful with regard to the screening, then of course, they will not be allowed to enter the campus side or the district office. And they will be referred then to, we will have, or the plan at least is to have a rapid smell test available if they choose to do that. They don't have to do that. That's that's an extra thing. And then they would be referred to other places to have a a test, a deep nasal test taken if that is their choice. However, until they are able to pass the screening or demonstrate that they have. Tested negative on a test, they would not be allowed to enter. So that that speaks to the process itself and the time that we expect it to start.
And there's, and there's only going to be two screeners per campus? Is that, am I reading this correctly?
Well, initially, there'd be one screener per campus. The plan for the places where, for instance, Lady, where they have the athletic programs. The athletes would report to the screener first. They would receive their screening and presumably if they if they do that successfully, then they would receive a hand stamp that day that would indicate that they have been screened, that they are safe to enter the facilities where the train, you know, where the training is taking place, you can, athletic conditioning, so. There.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe we have.
It's not nearly as much about testing as it is screening.
Thank you, Vice McKinley, and we have trustee Bonilla in the queue.
I believe trustee Jenkins had his hand up before me saw what.
Trustee Jenkins.
Thank you. A couple of questions. Can you guys walk me through what the bidding process was for this? How many people bitted on this? And then I'll have a follow-up question after that.
So I'll take that question. This is not a contract that requires bidding because of the thresholds that we have in our policies and because of the type of, the type of contract that it is.
Thresholds.
And what was, what was the process to select the company? Were other companies considered? Or was, how did we fall on this company?
Yes, we did look at other companies and this company was selected because of their ability to provide the services that we were asking for and to do it quickly.
Okay, and then just to follow up. So what's the process after someone takes the nasal test? And then what is the effectiveness of the nasal's test in determining the presence of COVID?
I could, I can answer that, so.
Okay, go ahead.
So the they would, of course, they would have to consent to taking the nasal test. The the research that's been done lately is, and the evidence is very persuasive, very strongly suggests that 85 to 95% of everyone who comes in contact with COVID-19, the first, the very first symptom they express is a loss of taste and smell. And if they, if they will agree to take the test, it will be available to them. It will be dispensed just like your hand sanitizer is from a hand sanitizing dispenser. They would then, they will receive a download of a questionnaire that would question them with regard to, you know, what sensory perception they have with relative that to that smell. And then that would be fed back to us as long as they agree to release that private health information to us. They could certainly decline taking that test, and if they do, that's fine. They they will not be allowed, of course, entry into the the campus side or the district office if they fail the, you know, fail the screening itself. Hopefully that answers your question. So the the evidence suggests that the test is 85 to 95% efficacious.
I believe we have trustee Bonilla and then we have trustee Handy.
Hi, thank you. So so here's something to consider when we are looking at vendors outside of our locale. And I think trustee Handy has alluded to this directly. When we are looking at vendors that are not local to the East Bay and more particular, local to our footprint in the two, three cities that we do business with, it's really important that we do a level of due diligence when selecting a vendor from out of state. So that vendor would not only have to provide special services to forego a formal bidding process, right? So this is a special service. We don't have to go through a formal bidding process. But we should be considering, are those services that we are looking for local to our district? I don't know that these services are not local to our district. Because we do not want to. We don't want to procure dollars outside of the state when, if it's not necessary. We want to keep our dollars local. We want to support local business, local vendors. And so I appreciate the the level. I don't think there's a question about what is being done. I think there's a question about who's doing it, why? And so I'd like to hear a level of conversation that actually explains why we're using this particular vendor out of state as opposed to a local vendor. Thank you.
I'm having to give you some background on this particular vendor, if that works, and then maybe Chancellor Walter would like to speak about that also. The the vendor is one of the largest providers of these types of services in healthcare in the United States. And they have a subsidiary in California. The actual services will be supplied by that subsidiary. They are a minority woman-owned organization. And so they they, and they have a great deal of expertise and experience in providing these types of services throughout the United States, including California, through their subsidiary based in California. I don't have the name of the subsidiary. I don't know what that is right off the top of my head. And but we're happy to get that for you if that's, if that's, if that's a desire that you have.
Chancellor, do you have any more to add?
I don't really have any more to add. I I know that this process, the process of selecting this vendor was vetted to the best of our ability, given the fact that they are minority-owned, given the fact that they have a California subsidiary, given the fact that they are CNAs, given the fact that it's a medical organization, given the fact that what we wanted to do was to provide screening at entry points. We wanted to do it in such a way that we could have it done before the semester started. We had a bit of, you know, discussion about it. We looked at different organizations. If there are, if there is an organization here in the Bay Area that can provide these services, that can get up to speed and move expeditiously that we don't know about, we'd be happy to hear. But I don't know of any.
Handy and then trustee Withrow.
I just say a brief point. It's been covered by a number of things, but one of the missions that we have, I feel, is as a giving one, as a matter of fact, of being an economic engine for our service area. And so I think that why there's a lot of concern about going to the state of Texas. They may have a subsidiary, is a subsidiary in our service area or in San Diego, LA. I just, I just have a concern about, again, the mission. And that's, that's why I think there's a lot of questions about who did you talk to? And who did, who submitted bids and whatever.
Thank you, trustee Handy, and then trustee Gonzalez UN.
Okay, so first of all, you said you weren't aware of any organizations locally. Roots is a minority female organization. We already have ties with them for our services. What we should be looking at is how the, any testing or anything that happens here could be coordinated with our own nursing program. So we would have the opportunity to pay our nursing students for their internships or work-study programs as well. If we approve this, the first thing in the morning, if not tonight, is going to be calls from Alameda County supervisors, Keith Carson, Nate Miley, my district here, asking me why we're doing this personally. And trying to find any information about COVID and trying to get a COVID vaccine. I am a Kaiser member. I sign up on the Alameda County website and immediately my information is disseminated to Kaiser. We have a system that works. I am not at all saying that we don't need to do these things for our students. Safety is the utmost, but I'm also not going to think for a moment that I care more about my students' health and welfare than our students do and that people are not taking the precautions. They no more want to be next to somebody who has COVID than they want to spread COVID. So we are all at that state now. We've been at this for almost a year. So I understand that when we do have students coming back, but that's not going to be soon, that we would have it. But when you say you're going to have one person at a campus, there are multiple points of entries to multiple buildings. So how, I mean, it's, you have one person and you have all of these sites that someone can can be at. Again. Again, I think that having the electronic thermometers for whatever instructors' idea. And then having people refer out, as other businesses do, if you have a temperature, you cannot come back until you have the results of your COVID test. It takes about four days to get that process done. Now, a couple of things. Laney College had already started this process, as I said before, and I know that Laney had a kiosk already set up. I know that Merritt College already has a medical expert onsite, as well as they have their, the nursing program up there. They have a certified athletic trainer and she screens every student at every practice. They have a QR code on the Merritt Athletic's webpage and students log in, a daily check-in, and then immediately see the trainer upon arrival to campus. So there, we're already doing this. Our, our athletic departments had already been on top of this before they were shut down. They have a testing kiosk now set up at Laney that they had planned to use for baseline testing and then twenty-five percent testing weekly. It's already up. So it's not that we're, I'm concerned about the testing. I'm concerned about small, local, minority businesses bidding here before we go outside. So if we, if we adopt a no-bid process, then all of us are going to have challenges with the county and understand how much of our funding comes to, from the county. How much that we get on a regular basis. We are a partnership. Our health, student health clinic, I was on the Student Services Committee with the head of Alameda County over, what, ten years ago, to bring the first student health center to Laney College. For those of you who have not been a Peralta for a while, that is the first collaboration of Alameda County and Peralta Community Colleges. It's a partnership. So for us to do something that would be redundant for an organization that's coming from somewhere else, it's kind of a slap in the face to our partners and to our own county. This does not negate the need for safety. Safety is our highest priority once our students come in. But what I am saying is, our athletic coaches have already researched everything to protect their students, not because someone told them to do it, but to protect their students before it was shut down. And they already have a master plan out. Our facility's got, I know they're looking at these plans. So I don't think that we have to go outside to do it. I think, Ron, that all the information that you're saying that we need and that we're going to be moving on, I think that that is really appropriate. But we need, you know, as, as I look at the screen, I'm seeing faces that are from all over the place and relatively new, not only to Peralta, but to the Bay Area. I am fortunately or unfortunately the most senior trustee at eighteen-plus years here. And so I am very firsthand aware of our partnerships, our relationships, and the inner workings of our city. So I am asking you to really think hard about what this would mean to our relationships and our partnerships and to the Root Community Center, which is doing a major amount of testing, and all of the churches and the other areas that are around here that are doing those services. And maybe this money would be better spent on something like the, the electronic thermometers in each classroom, some work-study programs or something where we can give some work over to our students. I just would like us to take some time and think about this before we move forward on it. So that we make sure that we're doing the best possible services and getting the most bang for our buck as well. And not getting me phone calls in the morning from Keith Carson and Nate, Nate Miley and Wilma Chan and all the rest of the supervisors, please. Thank you.
The queue. Nikki, I believe you might have the, the last comment. Go ahead, Nikki.
Thank you. I'd like to move to a vote relatively quickly here and I'd like this to be mindful of the time pressure and the just the incredible overall pressure that our administrative staff is under right now. I, I think the message has been delivered loud and clear that contracting locally is important. I think we have a pretty new administrative staff. And so I think they've gotten that message and we don't need to continue. But I think we also heard at the very beginning of this meeting and the last two or three meetings, there is a pressing need to reopen classes, to reopen athletic training. I think our staff is doing what they can do to keep our community, our workers, our students safe. If they err in a contract, which is almost at the level of chancellor's contracting authority, all on her own, without any board approval. Cut this one in half or in two-thirds, and she could have just done this on her own without coming to us. I, I think we've heard that. So let's, let's just vote this up or down. And if, if this board chooses to vote this down, I don't want to be here tomorrow fielding the calls from our students and our faculty and staff who are very eager to have training and classroom opportunities. So if we can proceed to a vote, thank you.
Gonzalez, you win. And I'm going to give the last statement to Dr. Walter. I'm going to, you'll be the last statement on this issue.
Thank you so much. I, I appreciate the comments and the information that was shared. And I also want to say that I do believe sincerely in the need to honor our, our local providers. However, time is of the essence here. We cannot do our reopening successfully and still be in compliance with the California guidelines for higher education. We must have screeners and students will be coming back. We've, we've, we've already indicated that we're going to be allowing people to come. More people, more students will be on the campuses this spring perhaps than have been since last March. So we really need to at least begin with this contract and then we can start thinking about perhaps doing something differently. But if we do not do this tonight, we're not going to be able to move forward with our reopening plans because this is a requirement to have screening. I would also like to add that we are under a tremendous timeline. And if we, if we, you, you, thinking about all of the pieces that have to go together to make sure that we're in compliance, this is one of them. And the last thing I would say is, you know, part of our protocol is to have students and employees come to a central place on a campus or in the district office or what have you. Just they, they're supposed to go through a, a direction. And it's that kind of thing that's going to help us with having everybody flow through a particular screening point. Once they've gone through the screening point, they will have an indicator that says they've been cleared to enter. Some sort of stamp on their hand or something like that to show that they've actually gone through this process. Many organizations have this and they have multi-campus sites within an organization. But yet and still, you have to go to this one location before you're able to have access. So I would just offer that this is a very, very, very important contract to go ahead and approve. And I would really appreciate the board's support and noting that we are under a time crunch, that we do have a requirement to have this kind of screening and we don't have it. But it is part of our opening protocols to keep our students safe. And with that, I think I will turn it back to you, President Reese.
Okay, I think that we got, we have a call for the vote, I believe. And as, as president, president trustee Gonzalez, you said at this particular point, we've heard the arguments and we've heard them loud and clear. And they are important, important points. So let us, let us, let us vote at this point.
Okay, student trustee Yaruni.
Yes.
Okay, trustee Withrow. Trustee Withrow.
There we go. Very reluctant, yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Abstain.
Trustee Handy.
I think we're getting a lot of misinformation and scare tactics, which I absolutely don't appreciate. Roots is already on board and contracting with our organization. Our, the sports athletics already have processes and testing in place. That is not accurate information that we're being given. I don't appreciate being now made the villain for pointing out the issues, but I will speak the truths. And so I say absolutely not that if you have the opportunity, it's not like students are not coming back here. This week, students are not coming back here, probably before summer. So we have enough time to actually contract with agencies that, or we don't even have to contract. We're already contracted with them. We can get these services here. And this is disrespectful to the community whose taxes that pay us to, to try to present that this is the only way, because that is not true. And I'm sorry, I'm not buying this at all. So my answer is an emphatic no.
Noted. Thank you. Trustee Delphine Polk.
I'll vote yes.
Okay, trustee Bonilla.
So this is not difficult for me and I'm gonna, and I really, really feel bad about calling this out. But I think to trustee Handy's point, this is not a medical service provider. This is a staffing agency. So Ingenious is a staffing agency that will hire and pull together a group of five workers to conduct screening for us. And so we need to be really careful when we are looking at outsourcing contracts, vendors, but we also need to be equally diligent about the type of vendor that we're bringing in. So this is clearly not a medical service provider. This is a staffing agency who will bring forward and hire medical staff to perform on this contract. So the, the information is just not clear and it's a no.
Got it noted. Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
Yes.
Trustee Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
And, yes, I, I was just going to say, and I think that it is noted that going forward, all contracts will be locally located, locally found, locally kind of inquired.
This process is a policy. We need to stick to it and, and support the people who give us the money through their tax dollars. This has always been a policy of Peralta and there's absolutely no reason for it. And to just pass it down, saying the next contract, our people here are hungry. They are out of jobs because of COVID. And we're sending money to a company's outside of state. You have to have some responsibility, folks. You really have to have a commitment to the community that we are serving. Our very students, their parents are ones that are out of jobs too. So we just can't keep passing the buck down. We'll get, we'll get around to integration at some time. We'll stop to having racist practices at some time. We'll get around to it. We never get around to it. And this is what it looks like, folks. This is what it looks like.
Let us move on to seven point seven.
Madam, madam vice president, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I just, I, I do have one more piece. And I want to call into question and ask legal for an opinion if this contract indeed meets the requirements of special services, since we were under the impression that this was a medical provider, but it is not. It is a staffing agency. And does that meet the procurement qualifications for no-bid sole source? I'd like a legal opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bonilla. We can provide a legal opinion for you on that question.
Thank you.
Okay, let us move on to seven point seven. Motion?
So moved.
Second? Can I have a second for seven point seven, please?
Second for discussion.
Yes. Okay, discussion. Linda, you're muted.
This computer is just not working. It's such a piece of junk and they won't allow me to even raise my hand or anything in here. So I brought this issue up for a question. Sloan has been our acting counsel for a while, but this is, this is the problem I have with this particular contract. This was a contract that comes under the chancellor's discretion of fifty thousand dollars. It started earlier last year and is now coming to us to be ratified with an addition of one hundred thousand dollars, making it a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract that got around a bid process. It, they are adding on services, I believe it says. Vendor will continue to provide legal service to HR employee relations and matters related to personnel contract to be, be increased by one hundred thousand dollars. I'm sorry, but this is, um, this is not a fair process again. If it is a contract for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then other law firms, which are also small, local, minority, would have an opportunity to bid. But if we start out with, under the chancellor's discretion, that used to be twenty-five thousand dollars that didn't have to come to the board, but it's been moved to now fifty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, when it goes to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's a whole nother process. And I don't think this is something that we have to rush through. And I have searched through trying to find a specific, it does not say not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's saying that the contract is that, it is, that's the amount it's going to be. And I'm looking for, I, I just could not find anything specific that they would be doing for that additional hundred thousand dollars. And also the fees and costs, they were going to be benevolent and not raise their fees for us. But what we have is a, okay, the scope of engagement, we provide labor, employment and transactional advice to the district and also handle arbitrations, curb matters, training and other projects as assigned. This is a whole nother set of services. So I just, I don't think that legitimately we can just pile on a hundred thousand dollars to a fifty thousand dollar contract without opening it up for a competitive process. Otherwise, it just becomes a pass-through that happens every year and we get the same company, but no other law firms or anything have an opportunity to participate in a, in a process.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Chancellor, could you respond to that?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for the comments. This is being brought before the board because we have been working with this organization for some time, the Peralta District has.
The Peralta District has and has been working with the Human Resource Department for a number of years. And this additional $100,000 is to cover expenses and invoices that are currently outstanding. This is not to provide a new service. This is to cover expenses that are in arrears.
So a 50,000, under 50,000 contract continued to go up another $100,000 without it ever coming back to the board?
The expenses from human resources under this person has extended to this level. And now the contract is being brought forward so we can pay those invoices. This is not, this is not a new contract. This is a way to pay the invoices that are outstanding for the services that are being discussed here. Curb matters, uh, labor, and other issues that have been circulating through.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave this. I am sure one of my other colleagues must have a question about how a $50,000 contract could get up to $150,000 without coming back to us.
There's another question. Trustee Jenkins?
Chancellor, at what point did the contract go over $50,000? And I'm trying to figure out, it went over $50,000, but we let it get a hundred thousand dollars over. So at what point did the administration know that this contract went over that $50,000 benchmark?
I'm sorry, I'll have to check that for you, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Trustee, uh, Bonilla.
Yes, um, so legal is, um, and I think we as a board have been contemplating and asking for quite some time for an analysis, um, on the district's legal needs and legal expenditures. And so we were told that that had happened in the past, but this board has never received, um, that level of information. So to many of our, um, into trustee Handy's point, you know, we, we don't know. We never know. We never know. And I think to trustee Jenkins' point, when we hit a particular threshold. So, um, it makes it difficult. It makes it difficult when we see that we have gone over cost. This is clearly a ratification, meaning services have already been rendered and now payment is due. So we, we have no choice but to, um, but to pay this bill. But I think there's a bigger, there's a bigger picture going on here, which is the analysis that is overdue to us, to the board, uh, which the board requested over a year ago that we were told and we spent money on a, um, we spent money for that research to be conducted, for that analysis to be conducted, yet that information never came forward. So that's disappointing, um, because we know that there were dollars that were actually spent to conduct a, an analysis on legal that this board has not received to date. So that's something chancellor that we definitely, um, and, and board officers that we definitely need to look into. Um, and I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and right before I go to you, trustee Handy, and just to be clear for everybody on here, uh, this was an analysis, again, as trustee Bonilla had said, that was asked a year ago from former, um, chancellors, as our chancellor has only been here in this interim position for a couple of months. And so let us just be clear that this is not, uh, the interim chancellor's doing. But yes, we do need an analysis, uh, to emerge at some point so that we know. Uh, yes, trustee Handy.
Okay, um, so, um, chancellor Walters has been with us since July, beginning of August. So that step, again, we're, we're still talking about close to six months. And so there's some responsibility in there in terms of the billing. The one thing that I did want to say, um, is this. The, the salary of the HR person was based, I'm not talking about our most recent, but, but as it passed on, the salary was based on a legal background, a background in many areas that that particular person would be able to cover. And I was very excited when I saw Ron McKinley's, um, resume, because he does have an extensive background in HR. What has happened is when our HR person had to leave because of a family emergency and then we put in the interim position, that interim was supposed to be short term and there was not the same, um, level of expertise. So what I'm hoping now, that we have a HR manager who has an extensive background in HR, that a lot of these things that have been contracted out, because this isn't, this is just one organization here. Um, Sloan, Jake Sloan's organization, we've had so many investigations that we have paid for. We have had all kinds of attorneys that we have paid for. So this is just one. This is the tip of the iceberg. But moving forward and sending no more, but this still has to be explained. I'm sorry, that's our fiduciary responsibility. I need to know more about this. As, as trustee Bonilla has said, we've been asking and we need to have that information immediately. But moving forward, I think, again, um, that I'm hoping that we have a higher level of expertise now and that many of these things that we have contracted out will actually be able to ha, be handled inside by our, um, true HR professional.
Thank you for that, trustee Bonilla, and then.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, and so, and so it's unfortunate, trustee Handy, um, that the analysis that we have been waiting for predates, um, this current administration. I've asked for it. It does not exist. Uh, it was conducted and promised to us by former administration that is no longer here and that information, um, does not exist. At least, our current administration does not have it. So that's unfortunate. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
I know, Julie, I'm, I'm at the oversight of the last six months of expenses, because this is dated November. Some of these expenses have just taken place in the past few months. I know we can't go further than that, but yes.
Chancellor Walter, could, did you want to make a statement first?
Sure, um, yeah, I don't have, we've not conducted an analysis since I've been in this role as interim. So interim chancellor, and we will be happy to take a, take an opportunity to do that analysis. I would also like to say that it is our intention to bring this work, the work that this organization, Sloan and, um, colleagues have been doing, to bring it back in-house, uh, and to not have it be something that we contract out. And partly, we can find this, as you mentioned, trustee Handy, because we have, uh, new folks in human resources and they can handle some of these things themselves. And we, we've seen a decrease in, uh, some of the filings, uh, grievances, complaints, and things like that over the recent past. So, um, this is really an unfortunate situation, I think. And we're, we're really trying to clean up our, our house here. So that's what this is about.
Thank you for that, Dr. Walter. And I believe our last comment is from trustee Gonzalez UN.
Thank you. Um, I think one of the things that's really refreshing about this discussion is that there is a widespread interest in the board to scrutinize, um, legal expenditures, uh, to scrutinize, uh, the functions in HR and, and other functions. I, I think that, that one of the really positive things in this board is the unity that we are experiencing in, um, having high standards for both administration and governance. And, uh, so I, I think that's all, I think that's all really positive. I, I would like us to be mindful that we're also trying to move forward in the spirit of, um, cooperation and support. Uh, and to try to be mindful of the tone that we bring to, um, our public comment, uh, our public interaction with each other. And to, uh, try to bring the highest level of morale and support to our endeavors. I think we can look forward to pretty significant reforms, um, in the personnel and in the hiring that we are getting moving forward. I'll also just note that this particular area is really challenging to have an open discussion. And so, you know, there's a lot of sort of opaque discussion that sometimes happens. When you bring in legal, you then, and personnel, you like border up on this stuff that you simply cannot talk about in public. It's just, it's impermissible to do that. And so I think, you know, anybody looking at this tape or watching the, the, the meeting might see like, nah, you know, they're really not saying very much here. And sometimes that's just because of the nature of the thing. That when, when you're dealing with legal matters and when you're dealing with personnel matters, we need to tread really, really carefully. And so let's not be too overly suspicious. And some of these matters can be dealt with in closed session with a bit more frankness than we can deal with in open session. So, thank you. That's it. Cindy, you're muted.
I believe our only new hand is trustee Withrow, if I'm not mistaken. And then let us vote on this.
Uh, just a quick comment. Um, this is for ratification. This is not a, an approval item. This is a ratification. And I think the discussion that's been had and the points that have been raised should go to the, as a communication to the institution that, um, don't do it again. In other words, it's a but, but the same token, this isn't the sort of thing to ignore. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Okay.
I have a one question before we vote, trustee Reese.
Yes, yes.
This is a ratification for past expenses. How much do we have billing that goes beyond those dates that are already coming up on this new year? That's, I'm, I don't need the number right now, but I think at our next board meeting, where are we now? This is just a ratification of what has already been spent. This is not the current charges. So again, this is a conversation that needs to be on our next agenda. And the wheres and how that we're going to get this assessment needs to be discussed. I, and I think closed session is a better place for it. So I'm asking that we put this on the agenda so that we can have an idea of what it is, what we're doing and what we're spending.
Thank you, trustee Handy. And I think that the chancellor may have, uh, one remark to that or one comment.
Thank you. So yes, this contract is, sorry, this request is for, uh, all of the expenses and we expect there not to be any more expenses on this contract or with this provider.
Okay, thank you. Let us vote. Alicia?
Okay, student trustee Yaruni.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
Yes.
And trustee Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Yeah, and now let's move on to reports. Uh, trustee reports.
President Reese, we still have the community member appointment.
My goodness.
That, uh, we were waiting for director Johnson to come back with, um, corrected numbers.
Absolutely right. Uh, director Johnson, are you still here with us? Let us know where we are.
Let me unmute, uh, and share my screen.
Yes.
So that is the results.
Gone vertical now instead of horizontal.
That's right. So the, uh, the top vote getter was Adrian Abouyan. And then there were three that were tied for the second, Josie Camacho, Lillian Hewin, and Richard Sherat.
Vice Chancellor McKinley, how do we deal with the, the three ties?
Well, if you remember, this is, uh, this is to help you with your, uh, discussion with regard to what you, who you're going to select. It's, it's not supposed to itself be the vote. So, uh, because that's, I'm, I'm told that's something you can't quite do. Uh, you need to have a discussion and your, your actual vote and selection will be independent of this straw. This is a straw poll to give you an indication of the thinking that's taking place, you know, in, among the trustees.
Okay, uh, trustee Handy and then trustee Gonzalez, you win.
My hand's not raised.
Oh, trustee Gonzalez, you win.
I'd like to put into nomination for the three positions, um, Adrian Abouyan, Josie Camacho, and Leilun Quinn. And the, I'd, I'd like to just note the balance of, the overall balance of the committee was, um, pretty imbalanced on gender, um, and was very imbalanced on race. Really disproportionate under representation of both, um, Latinx and, uh, API candidates. I think those three would go a long way towards, um, rebalancing.
You just put forth a motion.
Then I'd like to come back and consider the alternate.
Trustee Handy.
Yes. Um, I actually, um, think that our, um, committee is already labor heavy. And even if they say they're faculty or whatever, it is the same group of people. It's just kind of a, a moving around. So we have a lot of labor. So I don't suggest moving Josie Camacho's name, um, ahead. I think that, um, we have what we have. I'm not going to play the race card on this because there's not enough representation and, and all. And so I just think that we need to go with what people are choosing here. But as I looked at this list here that we were, I was not happy with it because over half of the names are names that have too close of affiliations with groups that are already on that list. So, um, I'd like to see some, the type of diversity that I'd like to see are names that we don't normally see affiliated with everything Peralta or everything labor. So, um, I really support, of course, our student. I mean, he's our own homegrown student and an amazing young man. Um, I, I, I support Serat. He was the highest, I believe he received the most after him. And, um, that's it. I, after those, um, those two, I'd like to see people that we just don't constantly see coming through here. Because as I look through all these names, I know the affiliations and we need some new, we need some new blood here. Thanks.
I think I have a motion. Uh, is there a second for that motion? If not, we need to withdraw that.
Can you, can, um, through the chair, uh, through madam president, can you repeat the motion?
Good. Trustee Gonzalez, you win. Do you want to repeat your motion?
The motion was to appoint, uh, Adrian Abouyan, Josie Camacho, and Leilun Quinn as, uh, representatives on the full members on the committee and then come back and revisit the question of an alternate in case one of them can't serve.
I'll second that.
Uh, discussion, trustee With. Uh, discussion, trustee Withrow.
I'd like to submit an alternate, um, uh, motion of, um, Adrian and, um, Lilian and Richard Sherat.
Friend, for the alternate motion, do, uh, uh, I may need procedurally some help here. Uh, that would not be, would that be a friendly amendment? Um, the motion maker, what say you?
Uh, I, I don't accept that as a friendly amendment. I think it, his motion needs to second procedurally.
So then we have two motions on the table then?
No, we don't have a second mo-, we don't have a second from trustee Withrow's motion.
I will second trustee Withrow's.
I see. Okay. So I think procedurally now we have a substitute motion that gets an up or down vote. I believe that's what happens. And if that motion fails, then we go to the main motion. I believe that's procedurally what happens. So trustee Withrow, could you restate your motion so that it's clear?
Well, the, the three candidates would be Adrian, Lilian and Richard Sherat. Leaving, uh, Camacho as the, um, alternate.
Shall we vote on that substitute motion?
Yes, you take the vote on the substitute motion first and then you take the, if it fa-, if it fails, then you can take the motion, the vote on the primary motion.
Thank you. Misha?
Okay, um, student trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Okay, and trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
I'm sorry, we're voting on a substitute motion?
That's right.
With Josie as the alternate, is that what I'm hearing? With Camacho as the alternate?
Yes.
That's correct.
Um, sure. Yes, that works.
Trustee Gonzalez U N.
It seems as though this motion is going to pass and so I will just go along with it for the purposes of unity. Yes.
Okay, and trustee Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And that is for Adrian Abouyan, Richard Sherat and Lilian Sandra Quinn and Josie Camacho as the alternate.
Yes.
It's Leilun, but yes.
Leilun, sorry.
Also, can I say something in future? Can we repeat the motion? Because I did get a little bit confused and that would have impacted my vote. I just want to put that on record.
Oh, can we clarify that vote then again? Because if that in fact is the case, I think I, I would ask for, um, a revote on that in as much as our colleague has said she did not understand the motion.
I apologize. I was, I was under the impression we were voting on Nikki's original motion.
And we were not, right. Could we please have a revote on that? Would our colleagues?
What happened to the solidarity?
No, I'm trying to make sure that in fact, the will of the board in fact is fully expressed, is properly expressed. If, if the will of the board is that, I will go along with that.
Shall I pull the, the board or shall I go for the, the revote? Again, procedurally, I need a little more information here. Shall we just, will you do the revote? Anybody in opposition?
I don't see the point of it, but there was one, one person didn't understand that we were voting on a substitute motion, but I don't see rolling the whole thing back.
Okay, well, let's, let's do the revote if it's, if one individual, um, Natasha, am I okay in doing that? Do I need to say anything else at this point? Can we do the revote?
I can make a motion for reconsideration. And if it receives a second, then we would vote on that. I move to reconsider.
I believe we were waiting to hear from Natasha. She was calling on Natasha.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks trustee Handy. Yes, trustee Gonzalez U N, you're right. Uh, the only way, once a vote has occurred, the only way to have a quote revote is to first have a motion, uh, to reconsider. Uh, if, and the motion to reconsider must be made by someone who is in the winning side of the original vote. Uh, and if a motion is made by someone on that side and it receives a second and a majority vote, then you can consider the question again.
I think we were all on the winning side.
Yeah, so I made a motion to reconsider. If it receives a second, we vote again. We, we can vote on whether we vote again.
That's right. The trustee Polk, would you like to second that motion?
Um, yes, please. I apologize again, folks.
That's okay.
Okay, Misha?
Okay, uh, student trustee Yaroni.
Can you please read, can you please show that we're reading out the motion?
Absolutely. The motion that you are, you are, you are being asked to vote on in this moment is whether you would like to reconsider the prior vote.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, student trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
No.
Trustee Jenkins.
Wait, this is to reconsider?
That's right.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
No.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez U N.
Yes.
Trustee Reese.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes to reconsider the vote.
So I believe now president Reese, we take that vote again.
Okay.
But I don't know whether the motion needs to be made again by trustee Withrow.
Natasha? Does the motion need to be made by trustee?
Or whether we start all over?
No, the standing, the standing, the motion as it was made with the second, unless the person who made the motion or the person who originally seconded the motion would like to not be in that position, it can stand as it was originally made. So my recollection is the, the motion, the substitute motion was made by trustee Withrow and it was seconded by trustee Handy.
Okay, um, and just for clarification and clarity, can, can you, uh, state that motion again, trustee Withrow, so that everybody's on the same page? Your original substitute motion, trustee Withrow? With your individuals. Um, so I believe it was Richard Sherat, uh, Leilun and Abouyan.
That's it, those three.
With Josie Camacho as the fourth, is that correct?
As the alternate, that's right.
Okay, um, so we're clear on that motion? And the second for that motion was?
Handy.
Was trustee Handy. Okay. Um, that was a substitute motion. So now we are voting on the substitute motion. Misha?
That is correct. Okay. Um, student trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Clarification, we are voting on what?
The substitute motion of trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Abstain.
Trustee Bonilla.
No.
Trustee Gonzalez U N.
No.
Trustee Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
I would like to change my vote to a yes.
You can, you can change my vote back to a yes also. Unity is important here.
That's not unity, guys. It's just changing the vote.
It's changing the vote. It's all, it's all done in good.
Can we just be honest and let it move?
Good spirit is that it is what it is.
So, uh, Misha?
The motion passes.
Okay, um, and, and our, our four, our three community members, again, so that we're clear, are Abouyan, please correct me if I'm wrong,
Okay.
to Sherat and Leilun Quinn
That's it.
with our alternate being Josie Camacho.
Right.
All right, let's move on to board trustee reports. Um, trustee Withrow. Uh, trustee Bonilla. Trustee Bonilla.
Pass.
Trustee Polk, Delphine Polk.
I'm good.
Trustee, I'm just going by our squares here, trustee, uh, Jenkins.
So I just want to acknowledge president David. He got an award, the People's Choice Award at, um, Say the Black Excellence Oakland. Um, and so their mission, congratulations, five, five, five.
Appreciate that, appreciate that, oh man.
Absolutely. Um, so their mission is they want to be seen as an organization that uplifts black excellence, assesses direct campaigns and supports black educators and services. And I'm happy that we have one of our own that has received an award for me.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Trustee Handy? Board reports, trustee reports?
Sorry, I'm sorry, is this computer? Um, no, still, still handing out meals, um, budget's being cut, people are struggling, we need more. That's where we are. But, um, oh, I did put in, um, in the chat the, um, the address to sign up for, um, your COVID shots. It's at smartsheets.com, but if you can check. If you go on to that, that's the county's website. Everyone should do it. Put in your information, there's a dropdown for the different, um, for the, for, for your, like if you're Kaiser or whatever, you can actually put your insurance in there. And that way you're in the county database. So as they're prioritizing, you also list if you're a healthcare worker, educator and all that. So even if you're trying to call your own doctor and good luck with that Kaiser, two to four hours, but every day Kaiser is getting closer to having online where you can check. But in the meantime, make sure that you're in the county's website so that, um, if you have any prioritize, whatever reasons to be able to get a vaccine, you'll be able to do that a lot quicker. And I was trying to look for it again, um, I lost where I had, oh, here it is. It's called, um, Smart forms. Wait a minute, I'm sorry, um, I'm sorry, smart sheet forms. And it's app.smarthheet.com.
Leave that in the chat, is it? Okay.
Yes, I did put it in there, yeah.
Thank you. Um, trustee Gonzalez U N.
I'll pass.
Okay, um, and I will pass. And vice president Gonzalez U N, do you have any announcements for us this evening?
I do. Um, the district professional development day is Thursday, January 21st. And colleges are having their professional development days on Friday, January 22nd. It looks like a, a, a great lineup, um, to move us forward. And the next board meeting is February 9th. And enrollment is still open right now for classes starting January 25th. So, sign up for classes. That's it.
Great, thank you. And with that, we will adjourn. Thank you all for our wonderful evening and for staying.
Siri received an award as well.
I'm sorry.
Siri received an award as well.
Oh, great.
It's fun to acknowledge, uh, Siri.
Thank you, thank you. Um, good job. Okay, um, let us adjourn. Have a wonderful night, everyone. Have a great weekend and we will see each other in a few weeks, if not before. All right. See you. Night.
Good night.